All right, ladies and gentlemen, the rise in time has it at 3:00 PM, which is the appointed hour for our monthly Board of Supervisors meeting. And I would like to welcome all the members of the public here. We encourage participation, and this is the kind of thing that makes your government work better. One little piece of business, if you would, silence your cell phones and any other devices that you have that might beep, boink, or otherwise interrupt people when they're trying to make their statements. I'd like to ask Mr. Jesse if he would open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for your many blessings. And dear Lord, let's thank these concerned citizens who come here today for the decisions that we make. And dear Lord, let's pray for our servicemen and women overseas and keep them out of harm way, and pray this state and this nation, and let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business. This is my prayer, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen. Would all citizens of our nation rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You folks that are all the way in the back, are there any people down the stairs that are unable to get to where they can at least see? How many folks do we have?
Tell them to move around.
You can move around the room and come up. It is all the way down? There are a number of issues with the possibility of moving this meeting that are not particularly plus, but if we've got an overcapacity crowd, I would leave it to my Board of Supervisors to make a motion whether we either stay, or there's no motion to stay, but if they feel like we need to recess to a larger venue.
Could we ask for a show of hands as to what people prefer?
Well, I'm leaving that up to us.
How many people are downstairs?
Yeah, how many more people are downstairs?
How many folks are downstairs, do we know?
All the way down the back.
I think we need to...
We can't get everybody in here. We can't get everybody in here.
I would move we recess to a bigger venue.
We have a motion to move to a larger venue, which would be St. Clair Walker Auditorium. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if you can make it at 3:30, that would give the buses time to have the kids out of the city.
Oh, yeah, we've got to think about that.
We will make the rea... We will call back to order at 3:30 PM at St. Clair Walker if this motion passes. We've got a motion duly seconded. Any other discussions?
It's 3:30 on the make.
Yeah.
Because the buses are coming in.
We just do the best we can.
Okay, fine.
Here ain't none. All those in favor of moving the meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Sheriff, which law is the court's? I replied that it has no meat in the resolution. Why are you considering it? You're finding that it is a political message. The problem I have with this political message is that it's described as local residents thinking otherwise. I can tell you that the people on Facebook were talking about how important it was and that they actually felt it was going to be a sanctuary. To them, this is not a want or wish list. It's serious. They take you at your word, and you approved this resolution. You have created in the mind of many the reality that living in a county that is free of law enforcement of any new gun laws. That's a big problem for all of us, and you would hear from many today about how they feel about protecting their rights to firearms. You really have no control over the local law enforcement except to control their budget. And within the resolution, in the 10th and 11th whereas of the resolution, county funding was mentioned, but no one mentioned the impact restricting funding to the sheriff. I'm sure that the sheriff would probably like to know how that would work as we all do. My suggestion to the board is to have a serious discussion over the impact this resolution less than it appears today, and decide if this is supposed to be a feel-good wish list document. With no real sanctuary for gun relief from any proposed gun laws, or is it a real thing? I will consult with local residents thinking the sheriff will not enforce Virginia laws. If you want to send a message to the state, write a letter, dump hamstring in future board with a message they have to clean up every... And explain to our residents that this resolution doesn't really mean what it says. It's a matter of perception, and I think you'll hear that today.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Trudy Fegan. And folks, please try to stay with us for a minute. Let's just add a demonstration.
This is a little tall for me. I hope that I can get it down here where you can hear me and I can read. I am Trudy Fegan. I am chairman of the Middlesex County Republican Committee, and as such, I am representing over 100 Middlesex County citizens. Included in your board meeting packets is a resolution we're asking you to adopt to designate Middlesex a Second Amendment sanctuary county. This item is included under new visitors on your agenda. We're presenting this, but it is not a Republican Party proposal. The resolution asks you, the Board of Supervisors, and the 2020 General Assembly, to represent us, the citizens of Middlesex County, to adhere to the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. The proposed resolution was published in the November 27 issue of the Southside Sentinel and is being distributed electronically to people throughout the Commonwealth. Our resolution will be considered by the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors, and I understand there is interest among some of this board to consider adopting it. Our legal counsel describes Gloucester's resolution as redundant, imprecise, and without any punch. Further, he emphasized the importance of the citations of case law decisions contained in this proposed resolution, something Gloucester's resolution does not have. The resolution before you is due to prefile legislative bills that are to be considered in the 2020 session of the General Assembly. If passed, these measures will violate the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution by mandating the confiscation and/or surrender of firearms by citizens of the Commonwealth, or we will face felony charges. These laws will apply to all citizens of record, those of us who vote, who pay taxes, and who abide by the laws of Virginia. The proposed laws are directed at allowable caliber of firearms, magazine capacities, signaling out people who may own guns, even the ban of tactical weapon training such as law enforcement is given. This resolution we are presenting is not about how these laws will affect countries, and they will, but about fighting against tyranny. Time is not on our side. We must be proactive, or we're going to be giving tacit agreement to the freedom we will lose and the oppression we are going to face. Due to time limitations, I will not read about the entire proposed resolution. I ask you to focus on what is declared. By adopting this resolution, the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors declares the county a Second Amendment sanctuary, and thereby expresses its intent to uphold the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Middlesex County to keep and bear arms. Further, as a board, you express your intent that county public funds, that means tax dollars, not be used to restrict the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Middlesex or any federal or state agencies in the restriction of these rights. As a board, you declare your intent to oppose any infringement on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms, using such legal means as may be expedient, including without limitation, court action. Supervisor Coons expressed concerns to me outside this meeting, and I was the only supervisor to do so. He said that as a delinquent Commonwealth, he's quote, "Not sure this board has the authority to do some of the things the resolution says we should do."
Trudy, can you watch the camera?
Oh, I thought I had 12 minutes.
Oh, you're speaking for...
I certainly am.
Please. Could we have the four folks that you're speaking for to stand this way?
Yes, please stand.
Okay. I'm sorry. I wasn't saying earlier. Please excuse me.
That's all right. Supervisor Coons went on, "If we really want to have our county have the authority to tell the sheriff not to enforce the state law, in my opinion, our resolution should be one calling for these decisions on guns to be made at the county level, which would require a weakening of the delinquent Commonwealth." As a United States citizen, it is beyond comprehension how being a delinquent Commonwealth in this instance supersedes or triumphs over the United States Constitution and the Virginia Constitution. There are scholars and attorneys who could study and get their opinions. As citizens, we do not have the years it would take to get these opinions. With regard to telling the sheriff not to enforce the state law, it is again beyond comprehension that this board can demand the sheriff or any constitutional officer to violate his or her public office to uphold the United States Constitution. How can you in good conscience ask the sheriff of Middlesex County to enforce laws that are unconstitutional and unnecessarily put lives at risk? Each of the prefiled bills, and at least 20 I've seen so far, that relates to the proposed changes to state gun laws are at our heart about gun control and the taking away of guns from citizens. Mental health issues and erosion of our culture that is resulting in the loss of moral standards and devaluing human life are generating these proposals. These are vitally important and worthwhile issues to tackle, but they are outside of what this proposed resolution is about. Mr. Coons told me Virginia's Attorney General quote, "Has already labeled these resolutions as law." So I don't know what purpose they serve, other than to send a message to legislators that some amount of constituents disagree with changes to gun laws." This board adopts resolutions from time to time, declaring our intentions. I recall this board adopted a resolution at your last meeting in November 2019 that declares your intention to loan the county water authority over $200,000. Was this a symbolic resolution? Do you as a board have no intention of honoring or adhering to your declaration? Likewise, the proposed resolution before you declares your intentions. If you have no intention of adhering to its provisions, then adopting it is senseless. This is not a feel-good resolution, but a declaration of intentions to protect the Second Amendment rights guaranteed to us by the Constitution. If Middlesex is legally challenged due to adopting this resolution, we know we are in good company. At last count, there are at least 31 other counties that have adopted this resolution, and more than 50 more are considering it this month. Don't hide behind symbolism. Adopting this resolution shows us you are giving us your support. I guarantee we will press this issue with the 2020 General Assembly, but as you know, all politics is local. Without your support, you take away our first line of defense. You will open us fully to these attempts to violate the United States Constitution and the rights of its citizens. As a Middlesex County Supervisor, you are responsible to ensure the safety of the citizens you represent. You may recall that after voting for Earl Harrow, the Japanese refused to come on shore on US mainland to assist or continue their fight because they knew Americans had guns and knew they would lose. Stalin turned on his own Russian citizens during World War II, mandating labor in camps called blums, and killing those who refused to comply if they didn't die of starvation first. German citizens gave up their guns as required by law, only to be massacred by their rule Hitler. What do all these examples tell us? Gun control is necessary for totalitarian rule to succeed. There should be no question about adopting this resolution. Socialism moves slowly through public education, public commission, legislative law, and rules and apathetic citizens. Communism takes over by force, meaning violence. We pray you don't want either in our country, and will take a strong stand to protect the citizens you represent. If not, you will reveal yourselves to be the very government we must protect ourselves from, and for which Second Amendment rights were given. I conclude by quoting the philosopher Edmund Murph, quote, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing wrong."
Again, I apologize for not realizing that you represented four of the people. Next up, we have Mr. Hal Muller.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Harold Muller. I live in 1939 Remle Drive, Middlesex County. Ladies and gentlemen, I stood before you on many occasions. Most of them seem very frivolous for what I'm standing here today for. I'm a 75-year-old man. I've lived in this county for 33 years. When I was young, I thought my country needed me, so I stepped up and enlisted in the military during the Vietnam crisis. After leaving the military, I signed up as a police officer. I stayed in that profession for seven years until one of my very best friends killed with his own wedding. In both of those instances, I took an oath to my country, to support and defend it, and also took an oath to the Constitution of Virginia. I knew in both cases that I could lay my life down at any given instant, and I was willing to do so, and I know some of the members of this board have faced completely the same oath. You all have taken an oath of office. I hope that you've read the documents that you swore in oath to, and that they're not hollows, that they have meaning to you, because they really should. And as our representative, we ask that they do mean something to you, and that you do support the Constitution of the United States. My wife and I have never been convicted or accused of felony or misdemeanor. My wife always wanted me to get a traffic ticket because I never got one for speeding. I got stopped, but I usually talked my way out of it because I had been a police officer. I got a ticket for improper equipment, and I told that officer, a Middlesex officer, that he finally made a woman happy in Middlesex County. My wife was zimmering over the fact that I got the ticket. There's no way that the guns that we have should be taken away from us, none much the way. We bought those guns for the purpose of sporting, playing, to protect ourselves against criminals. We're older now. Vistacups left me many, many years behind, so I need a method to protect myself. Also, got those guns because I'm an avid history book, and I wanted to protect myself against the tyranny of government. I'd like to read two quotes to you, if I may. One is from an individual right here from Middlesex County, from Middlesex County. "I prefer dangerous freedom over peaceful slavery. What countries can preserve liberties if the rumors are not warned from time to time that the people preserve the spirit of resistance, let them take arms? The laws that forbid the carrying of arms are laws of such nature." Thomas Jefferson, from this county on 12/20/1787. The next quote is, "The state must declare the child to be the most precious treasure of the people. As long as the government is perceived as working for the benefit of the children, the people will happily endure almost any curtailment of liberty and almost any deprivation." That, ladies and gentlemen, was Adolf Hitler.
And according to the schedule, the next person up is the one who's so happy that she's getting that ticket.
Yes, she was.
This is the microphone so you can hear me. Okay, my name is Linda Muller, and I live at 1939 Remle Drive. Our recognition was founded on principles of freedom, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our government is a democratic representative government. The citizens of Middlesex County did not vote Ralph Northam to be our governor, nor did the citizens of Middlesex County vote to put into office any of the legislators who are attempting to change our state's constitution. The citizens of Middlesex County did vote to put each one of you into your Board of Supervisors position. You took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the state of Virginia and to represent your constituents. The citizens of Middlesex County are here tonight to urge you to send a loud and clear message to our General Assembly that our constitutional rights are sacred and shall not be infringed upon. When did it become acceptable for wealthy individuals who don't even live in this state to buy legislation that fundamentally changes our constitution? Do your duty today, sign the Second Amendment sanctionary resolution before you, and preserve our rights to protect ourselves from criminals and a tyrannical government. Join the 30 counties that have already adopted the resolution, and as of today, eight more have already done so. I've seen written statements from some of you that you fear supporting this resolution will result in the state withholding future grant monies. I find it telling that any of you would put money ahead of our constitutional rights. I have a renewed respect for the wisdom and forethought of our founding fathers, and I'm going to share a couple of their writings. Quote, "When any nation mistrusts its citizens with guns, it is sending a clear message it no longer trusts its citizens because such a government has evil plans." That was George Washington. "The Constitution is not an instrument for the government to restrain the people. It's an instrument for the people to restrain the government lest it come to dominate our lives and our interests." Patrick Henry. And last, "When government takes away citizens' rights to bear arms, it becomes citizens' duty to take away government's right to govern." George Washington. Thank you.
How you doing? Jeff Perkins, 313 Will Hall Road. I'm not against the Second Amendment. I'm against procedure, and I think that you should go down it today. I think there's a... Should really look into what it will do to Middlesex County as far as the law or, you know, be reviewed. There's two members on the board there who are in my argument because they won't be here in January, and I represent fully their constituents. And I just, maybe it real short, make up for the other people, think you should table this to January when you have five people who aren't the same background. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Richard Starr.
My name is Richard Starr. I live at 334 Ridge Road in Hartfield. I support the Second Amendment. I support an individual's right to own and possess firearms, but I don't believe that's an unfettered right under the Constitution. I agree with much of the sentiment that's been expressed here today, but I ask you to look carefully at the language of this resolution. I'm particularly concerned about language that asks you to state your concern about legislation or bills that have been or may be introduced that could be interpreted as a violation of the Second Amendment. How can you possibly state concern about something that doesn't exist, a bill that hasn't even been introduced, and state whether or not you think it violates the Constitution? Interpreted by whom? Who of us will interpret whether or not something violates the Constitution? Under our system, if a law is adopted and signed into law, it is constitutional and it is enforceable up until the point at which the highest appropriate appellate court rules otherwise. And when that happens and the court strikes it down, it is unconstitutional and unenforceable. There really is no need to adopt a resolution that says, "We oppose enforcing laws that are unconstitutional." They are ipso facto unconstitutional and unenforceable. But I ask you to look very carefully at the language that pertains to the bills that have been prefiled in the legislature. The prior speaker said all of these bills infringe on our constitutional rights. I look carefully at them. I don't believe that's true. I have issues with some of the bills, and I think everyone here should contact the General Assembly and state your opinion as to whether or not you think they are good laws or whether or not you think they are constitutional laws. But there are some bills that have been introduced that I really don't see a constitutional issue. There's a bill to ban bump stocks. I've been a federal prosecutor for 40 years. I've argued cases in the United States District Court and the US Court of Appeals, and I'm a member of any law, or, excuse me, any decision by a court that says there's a constitutional right to own a bump stock. I ask you, if you're going to look at this resolution, to parse the bills that are pending and state whether or not you think each of them does or does not raise a constitutional issue. But most of all, I have to say to you, be careful about adopting resolutions of this nature, because if you take time away from county business to adopt, to consider and adopt this resolution, then be prepared next month for resolutions on climate change, immigration, rights, whatever. You'll be taking time away from county business to deal with a whole lot of those. Thank you.
I have Michael. Is it Aiken? 633 Whiting Creek Road.
Michael Nez.
Please, to you.
My name is Michael Nez. I live at 633 Whiting Creek Road, Lewis Hill. I read a letter to the editor of the Southside Sentinel encouraging all of us to have issues with the protecting the Second Amendment, to call you, speak to you, come here, voice your opinion, go to the state legislature, talk to your representatives, be involved in the political process. That is appropriate. That is our function. We have our opinion, and we have the first amendment right to express it. What is not appropriate is for the Board of Supervisors to adopt this resolution now. We have a code of ethics. Recognizing that persons who hold a public office have been given a public trust, and that the stewardship of such office demands the highest levels of ethical and moral conduct, any person serving on the Middlesex Board of Supervisors shall adhere to the following code of ethics. One, uphold the Constitution, laws, and regulations of the United States, and of all governments therein, and never knowingly be a party to their evasion. That's what this is. You're obeying the law that hasn't even been passed yet. Whose function is it to declare laws constitution or not? I have an opinion. All of you have an opinion on various laws, whether they're constitutional or not, but as my uncle used to say, opinions are like noses. Everybody has one, except he wasn't referring to this part of his anatomy. What you take from that, it's not our world. It's not our role to declare laws constitutional or not, and it's not your role as members of the Board of Supervisors. You are functioning under the state constitution. There is nowhere in this state constitution that gives you the right to circumvent and obey laws that are duly passed. It is the court's function. This is not about the Second Amendment to me. This is about what kind of government we're going to have. It is not your place. Your opinion exists as valuable as mine, but you are a public servant, and you have your duty and your responsibilities and limits to those duties and responsibilities. I don't believe this resolution should be noted on at all, it should be tabled, it is not appropriate. We have other needs to effect the legislation that are at the hour. Let's get this one back.
For the people, by the people. Okay. We the people. Next up is James Barnhart.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors and staff. James Barnhart, 352 Woodport Lane. I'll come here. I was born in Richmond, and I was relocated to Middlesex County about four days later. With that being said, I support the resolution at hand, I believe in the Second Amendment. It's not about politics, it's not about Democrats, or it's not about Republicans to me. It's about Middlesex heritage, you know? It's about who and what we are. You know, Middlesex has been here as a, as a, from England since the 1600s, and I would say that if any thought that allowing the government to control us with their control of our guns back in about 1776, it'd be accused of being a Tory. You know, so with it being heritage, I feel it's important, yes, we're passing a resolution that doesn't have any legal effect, but it sends a clear message to our representatives in a firm way that can't be sent by a phone call or a text message. Thank you.
Mr. Alan Richardson, please.
Hi, I'm Alan Richardson, 28 North Shore Circle, Lewis Hill. I'm just here as a simple gun owner, hunter, and you can tell from my southern drawl that I'm getting a lot of blazes. And I've seen what's happened with other countries who had their, their guns taken away, Australia, UK, Russia. Young people have their guns now, other criminals, because they want to have them. And there are people out there picking away at the Second Amendment and, you know, politics are not, you can see them picking away. There, there are people out there that don't even know one end of a gun from the other, but they're going to dictate to any gun out here what they can and can't have. That should not be going. The Second Amendment in the Constitution, I support that, I've gunned in other countries I've seen what's happened over there. And this basically being a message to you, the board, making a decision on this, whether that sanctuary is a worthless piece of paper or not, and sending a message to the people, hey, don't mess with us, then do it. And if you want a, a simple message, if you were to have a show of hands down, and let's say for instance, it was a ninety cent, say, yes, it paid the sanctuary, and you are voting on, looking after your residents, and they all say, give it go for it, and you ignore it? Well, what happens to democracy? You're allowed to be, will dictate what you can and can't own, and we don't have to dictate this. You ever look in the lab, and the pass around them, take away the guns, take them out of the trenches, shoot them in the back of the head? Just look at the history books. You have the Second Amendment here, the right to bear arms, and if you can send a message to those people, whether it's worth paying attention to them or not, I say do it. If you have a show of hands, and it's fairly unanimous, you ignore that, then honestly, you have no right being out there if you're not listening to people. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Your next up is Alan Holmes.
Good afternoon, my name is Tara Holmes, and I live in St. Louis, Virginia. At first, I wasn't going to speak, but being the daughter of a sheriff, I carry a gun on myself, I have a gun in my home, and it's just for protection only. But I came to this meeting with an open mind to respect others as we respect ourselves with this decision. But let's table this resolution for further study before we move on, because the state laws supersede this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Jim Duff.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to be with you. I live in Hartfield, Virginia, my name is Jim Duff. Who should decide what is constitutional? Is that people in this room? Is that the sheriff? Is it you, the board members? Are you in a position to decide what is constitutional? Actually, the Constitution itself is the final authority of that. And how do you derive opinions on the Constitution? You pick it to court's law. That's where these issues go. If you have, if you have reasons to believe that a law is not constitutional, then you have an active duty to go to court and test it, make sure the court's tested. As you know, since I pointed it out to members of the board, in District Columbia versus Heller, it does not say that anybody can own any gun. The decision is written and leaves the doors open for limitation. So just to say that the Constitution, the Second Amendment, is second, well, Antonin Salina said there was room for restriction. So why is this legislation being considered when it's clearly against all the laws that we know? It appears to be an attempt to illegally take away the powers of the courts. It is thus an instrument of constitutional chaos. As supervisors, it is your job to be crew heads, the ones who make determinations based on law within the authority granted. You have taken orders to do so. You should be telling people that this resolution is illegal. It sets the stage for illegal acts. I remind you that your solid authority has limits. If you're counting on this protection, this protection, I encourage you to think again. I asked you the question, could your vote on this illegal act be an intentional act or weapon gross negligence? If so, you might not have immunity. For all who have a bright mind would take a vote, or would take a vote themselves or a political party to abrogate the courts, the constitutional courts of our democracy. I suggest you table this matter, do research, take it to court.
1143 Point, Point A, Lewis, C.C. Clemmons. All right, this national I cannot make out at all, so I'm going to tell you, 250 Shore Drive, Hartfield. I'm trying to catch some help, I can't, can't make it out. Nobody here from 250 Shore Drive in Hartfield. North End Road. His last name is Shepherd, I can't tell what first name, Elaine Shepherd, 1151 North
My name is Elaine Shepherd, and I've been living in Hartfield, Virginia. And I have mostly questions, I guess, for the board. I'm not expecting all the answers right now, but some of my questions are, has this resolution been reviewed by the county attorney? If so, where is their write-up on any possible legal exposure by the county to passing this resolution, especially financial ones? If this is passed, it appears that this resolution by the board would encourage residents and the sheriff's deputies to disregard or fail to comply with certain Virginia laws. Who determines what laws relating to guns that Middlesex residents and the sheriff's employees should follow, and which one should they disregard? Shouldn't it be up to the courts to decide which laws it has instead of the board of supervisors or the sheriffs? Also, how is this going to work? I do have a, some work experience, I worked in, in a law enforcement agency, and I'm very familiar with the gun check programs in the state of Virginia. Passing this resolution without considerable deliberation in how this would work and the potential ramifications is risky and potentially costly, could be costly to the county. For instance, is a county going to tell gun sellers that they do not have to do background checks for gun sales? Especially if the universal sales background check is passed? Should they stop doing them under the current law? Not sure the definition in how you identify a law-abiding citizen, especially without mandating a complete background check. If a red flag flag law is flawed and passed, should the sheriff refuse to abide by the court order and not pick up the person's gun? What happens if the target of the red flag didn't shoot someone or themselves as a result? Is a county prepared to defend lawsuits from residents who were shot as a result of the sheriff and county failing to abide by state law? I strongly feel that passing this resolution is not in the best interest of the county and its residents. Thank you.
Dr. Gladys, please.
I'm for the amendment, and I, everybody's vote is a vote for me.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Ray Rogers, 694 Ivy Shores Road. Just want to make sure I did my last name right.
My name is Ray Rogers, I live at 694 Ivy Shores Boulevard in St. Louis District. I do not know about your forefathers, but my forefathers gave me the right to keep and bear arms, and I support that amendment. And in order to, I, I believe that the, well, first of all, people from, that are opposed to this amendment have argued both sides in particular, that this thing has no teeth, there's nothing you can do with it, and so you should leave alone, all the way to exploring to strike down some laws and cause all these problems. So, you know, I don't think it's either one. I think it's the people voicing their opinion, what they want their representatives to do. Now, for someone to pick away at the gun, our right to carry it, to keep it bare arms, you've got to convince me that I don't have the right to protect myself or my family. I cannot imagine, I can't conjure up anything in my memory that sounds a little ridiculous and tell a man that he can't do that, defend himself. And I feel like the earlier gentleman, I'm not a young fella anymore, and, you know, I need something a little bit more of my side if it ever came to that, and I hope and pray that it doesn't. I want you to support this amendment because I want a collective voices heard. I think this attempt to, to table it is more an attempt to get a new board that might be a little bit more liberal, and I do appreciate that. This is the item in hand, and I want you to deal with it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Anderson, I live at 579 Molly's Way. I've heard a lot of people talking about what's right and what's wrong. Like, my forefathers put their right to carry arms, and it didn't say whether it was shotgun, pistol, BB gun, or arrow, or what it was to say, bare arms. In no way were the arms restricted to what we got bare, and if we're bad by those laws, we don't have any problem with the laws. A lot of the decisions that are being made in that country today are political decisions, and they may not people with political motivations. And I believe that's why this law is being questioned. Taking away our rights is not the way to solve the problems that we've had in that country with people being shot in multiple shapes. They're solving the problem with the law, right? I don't want to be disrespectful, but, you know, it'd be like trying to cure cancer by killing all the people off so you don't have more cancers. And that's all I've got to say, you know? Thank you.
Mr. James Rice, please.
Mr. James Rice, 227 Chalmwood Point, Tapping. I'm here today to, shall I do support the resolution? I've heard all kinds of arguments today in different directions. One I've heard before, not just today, is that the Second Amendment, written in the 18th century, only covered muskets, while the Constitution's able to move with the rest of the country. In 2019, we now have the Fourth Amendment that now applies to every piece of electronic utility equipment we have. So I don't see any reason why we should limit our Second Amendment simply because of the fact that we have more and different weapons. Weapons are not the problem, they've never been the problem. The problem's been the mindset that says, I'll settle this by shooting someone. It doesn't do any good to take guns away from the gun owners, especially the law-abiding gun owners. And 99.99% of the people in this room that own guns are the proper gun owners. Now, there's a push in the country right now to start limiting and reducing our Second Amendment right. And my understanding of this re, of the resolution, is that we're simply asking, that enough of these county governments get together, we can ask the presentees to the Virginia Legislature to say, look, the people don't want these laws. And that's what it is, I'm not asking you to change the laws, I'm not asking the sheriffs to not obey the laws, but I think this resolution sends a message along with probably others in Virginia, that Virginia's not ready to surrender its Second Amendment. Second Amendment rights to people who would take them away out of fear. That's all I got.
I'm Barbara Wallace. I live on Twixbury Road in Hartfield. I'm president of Middlesex Shooting Force Club. We have over 600 members in our club, and we are primarily safety and training. That's our foundation of our club. It's a very safe place to come and shoot. I believe that lawmakers, people who are going to pass laws about guns, need to know about guns. If they're not experts on guns, they need to consult people who are experts on guns. Large magazine guns, jam, they malfunction. Malfunctions are very hard to fix. Small magazines that do not carry many rounds can, with very minimal training, a person can be trained to change those magazines very fast. So going to the small magazines is not going to help the problem. We don't have a gun problem in America. We have a mental illness problem. We need to work on that. Chicago has more gun laws than you can shake a stick at, and where are the most murders done? Mass murders do not happen in places where people are armed. You ever heard of a mass murder? Think somebody's going to go into their sheriff's office and shoot everybody up in there? No. It happens where they know guns are not allowed, because these people are mentally ill and they're also chickens. They're not really, they don't want to go after guns. So, and at our club, we do not allow bump stocks. We do not allow fully automatic weapons, and we don't even allow people to refer to their guns as weapons. It's a sport. They have a pistol, they have a rifle, they have a shotgun, and you shoot a skeeter. That's basically what I have to say. Lawmakers need to know what they're writing laws about. I'm, I'm not a lawmaker, I'm not an attorney, but I do know about guns, and there are people out there who know a lot more about them than I do.
Craig Donner.
Hello, folks. My name is Craig Donner. I live at 651 Glass Road in Urbana, Stone, Maryland. I grew up in the military. Both my father and my mother were in the Marine Corps. First time I shot a gun was six years old. I carried a gun when I was nine years old, on the back of a motorcycle with my dad in McDonnell's in Richmond. This was back before any of these laws existed, back when you could order a 22 pistol, rifle, anything through the Sears catalog through the mail and have it delivered to your home. And you didn't hear about mass shootings then? Everybody had a gun. And I do not agree with not voting on this. This issue needs to be voted on now. Any vote against any weapon, against any magazine, against anything that has to do with the Second Amendment is a vote against the Second Amendment. If you vote to ban a bump stock, I don't agree with that. If George Washington would have had an AR platform back when we fought the English and someone gave him a bump stock, do you think he would have went, "No, no, no, I can't use that"? Hell no! He wouldn't have used that. We would have won the war even quicker than we did. Vote on this tonight. Vote on this for the people. All these people, the, I would say, 98% of the people here are in favor of you voting to adopt the Second Amendment. Do it. Do not, do not, do not, do not vote for other people. Do it now. I elected you, I pay taxes. You, you do my bidding, not you do your own bidding. It's you do the people's bidding. You took it whole. Thank you. Have a good day.
Davis Wilson, please.
Good evening. Davis Wilson, 781 Cordadge Drive. And I like Mr. Barnard here. I guess I'm a transplant. I was born in Richmond, but I've lived my entire life here in Middlesex County. I'm just a single voter. You're my representative. I'm here to ask you today to approve this amendment. I've heard a lot of pros and cons, of what we should do and shouldn't do, how we should let the courts handle this, how we should let lawyers handle this, how we should let legislators handle this. As far as I'm concerned, my opinion is that is valuable enough, so I want to apologize to these people who are speaking against this, because we all have the right to come in here and say what we think we ought to do. That's our opinions. That is our right. It's part of the constitutional legitimacy. And for us to suppress that is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is, is, we shouldn't, that's all we're even allowed to have to, but we all respect everybody's opinion. But as a voter, and Mr. Manstiel, I'm talking to you, as a voter, that's right, I can assure you that you will not be getting my vote if you do not approve this amendment. I've heard people saying, "It is that new, but back is left, the law was left on, judges hear this." I'm a retired police officer. I can't tell you the number of cases I've had that were solid convictions. Nobody's hands above. Conman's attorney would meet me and say, "Can I speak to you a minute?" And I used to call, in loss particularly, I used to call him the coat room Conman's attorney. Most of my cases were handled in the coat room, where you buy your nabs and your coats are going forward. So, I respect that gentleman's opinion, but this is for the law. You're forced to do this, but who are the, who are these people? We all have different opinions, and that's why we're allowing them in today to speak. But, as a voter, you're supposed to be representing me today. You're not supposed to be representing judges or anybody else. We're not asking you to violate any law that hasn't, this isn't even, this, we're not even, we're just letting everybody in Richmond know that we, Middlesex County, do not agree with the way you're making the law. And so we're here, I'm here to ask you to vote for the amendment.
I'm Sharon Phelps, 441 Molly's Way, Saluda, Virginia. And I'm here in support of this amendment, this resolution, and I am asking you to vote tonight in favor of it. As we all know, guns don't kill anyone. People do. It isn't as Barbara Wallace stated, it is a mental illness issue, which is for another discussion. We have 43,000 mental health beds in America for 330 million people. So it would be very hard to even try to address how to deal with mental illness issues. But in almost every case, a bad guy with a gun is stopped by a good guy with a gun. And for those of us here tonight who support this resolution, we're the good guys. You do not like guns, that is your right. You do not believe in God, that is also your right. But when someone breaks into your home, the first thing you're going to do is call someone with a gun, and the second thing you're going to do is pray that they get there in time. So that's all I have to say. Trudy, Representative Meacham, she presented this resolution. I implore you to vote tonight, help us defend ourselves, especially against a tyrannical
Monica Fandless, please.
Suppose that the question was, instead of the gun rights, that we, that every fourth child would be gunned in in order to reduce the population, you all would be aghast.
Monica, for the record, 500 long point late.
Yes, correct. Sorry about that. You all know me so well. But definitely been aghast at that, and we are just as aghast at something that we think, we realize that, you know, when this Constitution was made, we didn't have powers, and I wouldn't care if my neighbor had one. I think that would be just fine. But you're talking about using the courts, and the problem is, as is said, it takes almost a year to get to Supreme Court and lots of money. And how many people are going to be shot and killed by law enforcement trying to enforce a law that would be like this? So, you know, this thing about, you know, trusting the courts and all that, we've already seen it, which is overturned since Trump's been president, of things that they tried to stop him when he had the right to do as president of the United States. Anyway, so if somebody gets set in the last election, the people run, they said, "Oh, yes, and by the way, we're going to take away your gun rights, or we're going to, you know, severe reduce some, you know, safety children," which is not the case. It's crazy people. These are the ones that are doing, you know, harm, and they're scaring the children to death. Instead of giving them safety crips and all this, they're basically, you know, scaring them so that they're afraid to death of guns. And they are a tool, like a hammer. There's more people that are injured with baseball bats and hammers than there are with guns, and certainly with cars, and nobody is trying to ban those. So I, I think that, you know, I would definitely support this. And I think the red flag thing that came up, that's kind of a debatable issue, but one of the things they said, you know, if you have met on Medicare, or you have, you know, if you're old, and I'm 74, women aren't supposed to tell you that. And they want to say that, you know, I'm like you, "Don't, why? Because I raise chickens?" And they come along and say that I'm not mentally fit. Well, I am, and I'm taking care of 64 of them and some dogs. So you, you can't determine what's wrong with somebody, mind, saying that, "We'll just wait and run it through the courts." We need to send a message to Richmond about this.
Thank you. I'm Scott Cahill. I retire a good part of the time from 400 Molly's Way on my boat in Urbana. I spend most of my life here these days. I have had opportunities many times to speak about our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and I thought it would come, and I'm going to come and share my words with you. I think it's brave that you're taking this on. I think it is vitally important. I think the history looks at you today because this is one of the primary attempts at marginalizing rights which were given to us within our Bill of Rights, the First, the Second, and the Fourth primarily. The right to keep and bear arms was written very specifically by the forefathers. Much time was spent on the verbiage. Shall not be infringed. We talk about bump stocks, we talk about fully automatic weapons, we talk about silencers. Shall not be infringed. When those men wrote those words, that is what they meant. They didn't care about our hunting. They didn't even care about our protection of our families. What they wanted was a parity, a parity between the strength of these men and women and the entirety of our government running amok.
Six number, Karanas.
I tell you today, ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity to make a mark on history. Our government, I swear to you, has run amok. It no longer represents these people. The guarantees that were given to us, indelibly written, there's no confusion about what the Second Amendment says, there's none. It is indelibly written. They wish to put the maximum verbiage against that, so no one would ever come to the point which we enjoy today, where we're questioning that. And look at our First Amendment. I wish with all my heart that you continue and you consider this, and you vote on it and represent these people. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Amy Maloney, 751 Silver Road, Topping. First, I would like to remind all of us of our neighbors, and there's no need to move one another, there's no great need to come with such anger, with your claws out, get a pitchfork. We disagree. Some of the people I love most in this world, I totally disagree with, and I'm better for it.
Rest of the board, please.
Second, second of all, I hate public speaking, so I'm going to be really quick. What is at stake if we do adopt this resolution? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, I just know it's something we need to discuss. Are we going to lose some state funding that we need? I think we probably need all the funding we can get, but that's a possibility. It's something we need to discuss. Second, are we really trying to effect change here, or are we just trying to wave a flag? What if all of us right here tonight, instead of being here, do our home write letters and, and, and make phone calls? What if all of us were doing that? Would that not make more of a change than coming to you and just wanting to wave a flag and make a political point to the state? We need to address these things to the state. And so, in short, oh, one more thing. I don't think it's fair to our law enforcement to put it on them to decide what is lawful, what is, what is enforceable law, I'm sorry. And at the end of the day, I really think we all want the same thing, safety and freedom. And it's just a how to get there, and that's what we need to discuss. And so, I'm glad we're here to have the opportunity to each and discuss it, regardless of where you stand on that, but I don't think it's the county's responsibility to be here in this forum right now. It's not, it's not your job, it's the state's job, it's the federal government's job to decide what is constitutional.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Cartman, and I'm a resident of Middlesex County. I live at 759 Mariners Woods Drive. The decision to stand up and speak here today was a difficult one because putting myself out in front of a large group publicly goes against how I've had to live my life for the last 10 years. I came to Middlesex County out of necessity. It was a quiet, somewhat off-the-grid area compared to the places I had lived in the past. The people here welcomed me, and the sheriff's department made me feel safe. I ended up marrying at 26. The abuse started small, but it escalated quickly. He wasn't the man I thought he was. He had all the control, and he made sure that I couldn't leave. He kept my wallet, my phone, my car keys in his pillowcase at night so I couldn't leave. I was constantly separated from the kids, only having one at a time in order of being allowed to leave the house, so that I couldn't run, because I'd never had both of my children at me at the same, with me at the same time. The night I was finally able to leave was due to the quick thinking of my son and an amazing deputy, who actually I've run into years later, who's now a deputy here in Middlesex, I had a baby in the car seat, we need to go on highway. I had a baby in the car seat. We need to go on. I went back in the house to get my sleeping son. We made it to the car, but I didn't make it into the car seat. I was dragged out of the car into the dirt where I was choked and stomped repeatedly until I lost consciousness. My son managed to get my husband's phone in the struggle that he called 911. When deputies arrived, I was in rough shape and had the imprints of his boot tracks in my back and my face. Over the next few years, he violated protective orders left and right, never spending more than two years in jail at a time because of his connections. Courts and the police don't have much control over that, and they can't protect me or anybody else. I moved to another state and he found me, got another plea deal. I moved five states away. He found us again. I moved back to Virginia, to Middlesex County. I will not allow myself to be a victim anymore. I am a survivor. I will not keep running. I am trained well and I have a concealed carry permit. I target shooters, bobbies, and I will not hesitate to protect myself or my family when needed. The Second Amendment says the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Shall not be infringed. What does that mean? The exact definition of infringed is to act as to limit or undermine or approach on something. That's what a regulation is. So if we're regulations and limits on our rights to carry arms, the arms that we want where we want them and when we want to is an infringement, infringement, which is a direct violation of the Second Amendment. Do you know that upwards of ninety percent of all mass shootings happen in gun-free zones? Since the year 2000, ninety-six percent, including, of mass shootings have happened in gun-free zones, including places where establishments who have a no-gun policy posted on their door. Why? If I was a criminal who wanted to go out and shoot a bunch of people, I would absolutely make sure I was going to a place where I knew no one else would have a gun. I am not alone. Of the sixteen point three million women who have concealed carry permits in the United States, upwards of eight hundred thousand are victims of assault, stalking, or sexual violence.
Ms. Conaughey, you give the hand.
Mm-hmm. Letter speed.
I am. I'm just trying to get the...
You have a minute, you guys.
I have no idea how we've gotten here today. I understand becoming a sanctuary county does not change the law. It will, however, show the state and the government that we are united and we will stand together.
Amen.
If these constitutionally violating laws are passed, the state can come with their own, the state can come into our county with their own resources and uphold the law. But do they really have the resources to do that in every county in the state if we all stand together? Not one. The proposed laws will instantly classify me as a multiple-count felon. I don't have a record, and I really don't plan on going to jail as a felon. It's not just me. It's you. It's your family. It's your children. It's your neighbors. It's your coworkers. I came to this county blindly. It was just an unassuming, small, nowhere place on the map. I just needed a place to go where nobody knew where I was. I have grown to love its people and its history. Please stand up and show the governor that we will not take this laying down. We were granted the right to protect our own in seventeen ninety-one. Don't sit quietly while they try to take it away.
Trisha Abbott?
Hi, I'm Trisha Abbott. I live at ten ninety in Charlestown, Jamaica. Okay, both of the verbal term sanctuary, because in this same age, sanctuary is used for criminals.
Speak up in your life for this, like today. Mike, go on. Kevin?
Is it bad for you?
Is that wireless?
Yeah, it's a lot. It's like in the battery.
All right, we'll just take it down and try to get this audio into the situation screen. All right, we'd like to read the band, and Chris. That's not, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Trisha Abbott, let me get the shot. She wants to finish, start. Finish, start. Yes. You won't start again. Thanks.
Hi, Trisha Abbott, ten ninety, New York, Charlestown, Jamaica. That'll ring just in the near district, so I'm speaking to you directly and request you guys. So sanctuary, I'm a little conflicted about that term because these days it's rather used in a convoluted manner in a sanctuary for illegal immigrants, a sanctuary for people who want to do harm to others without much retribution unless they turn it down on themselves, like, I don't know, no-gun zones. So putting that little piece of my personal conflict aside, I concede to you to listen to these people that are here. The tide is turning. We have people in the government who fail to realize that we are the kings. That's where, that's how this wonderful country of ours got started. Playing the tyranny of the king and in turn saying, I will say what I want. I will vote into place the people that I want. So I have to say as well, pertaining to that, you guys are here right now. This matter is in front of you right now. It should not be tabled. It shouldn't be put off. It needs to be handled now. So it's more than a little oxymoron that people here are seeking a sanctuary to be protected for their Second Amendment. We need to understand, this is our government. You guys are, we're not asking you to legislate for the country or for the state. These people are asking you to represent them. So I ask you to hear us, to allow us to protect ourselves and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Hanos, go.
Hi, everyone. It's Chris Nace. I live in six eight Spears. I'm right there in church to you. And everybody can say political. It is political. When you start having, when you start with a flower and you start picking off flowers, pretty soon you're down sticks. When they start taking your rights away, it does not stop. When it comes to being political, we do need to speak now. We need to let everyone know, hey, this is what we want. Our district needs to represent us. This is what we want. We don't want everybody else. We don't want the California way. We don't want New Jersey, where you can own a pistol in New Jersey. But if you get a hollow point, it's an irritable bullet. You can only carry your pistol with you while you're in your home. You cannot defend yourself in New York. You cannot defend it when somebody's beating your wife. I'm the youngest of ten. I was three years old. My brother was beaten and hacked and hammered to death. They straightened his face off port asshole and acid on it. You can look it up. It's been on American motion on it. George McDonald. They found him inside a pond. He disappeared on Halloween night. He was found in February. I grew up a day just six years old with my first shotgun and my first pistol. We had people coming out there, fake police officers, fake FBI agents out of Maryland, the whole nine yards. More than once in the middle of the night, I would hear a gun go off. And everybody has their place to go in the house, their safe space. While our safe space was behind a shotgun, everybody sat at the door until my dad said it was okay. I was seven and a half years old. The second night that we heard somebody screaming in the house, and I heard a gun go off, and I heard someone screaming. It was a man that lived five miles behind us in the woods and tried to come to my sister and run to the radio. That's the way I grew up. All these police officers that we got in this county, just about everyone that lived local, I don't think of one person in this room right now that if something was going on and those officers beat it on hand, that we would not stop and help. I know I would, I would take that for a joke, but I'm here to help to save somebody else's. If you don't look out for us, the people won't look out for you. All these officers in this county, we have no problem with them. They do their very best, the best they can. My wife now has been going on, I guess it's been seven years, she had a massive heart attack at thirty-seven. It took fifty-seven minutes for the ambulance to get there. Fifty-seven minutes. At that point in time, we had one deputy working. He was on the other end of the county. That's usually what happens, is on the other end of the county. Most shootings, within three minutes, it's done and over with. If you cannot defend yourself, nobody can defend it for you. We are the people. We are the voice. You are our voice. If we wait until the law goes through, it's going to be a political row, through the courts and laws. It's going to cost billions of dollars, just like everything else has cost them, and nothing's going to get done. We need y'all to represent us in the way that we represent this county. We try to buy here. I know a lot of people that work outside of the county. They will go to the local hardware stores and buy something. They love this county. If you cut the head off the chicken, the chicken's going to run, the chicken's going somewhere else. The people are looking for you to look up to. We want to see your name signed in that paper. We want to see, hear your voices saying, hey, this is our Second Amendment. This is our rights. They can say what they want about a gun. You can go to Ace Hardware and watch a ten-minute video of them making a single barrel shotgun in fifteen minutes with a piece of pipe assault on the grill bit. It's not the gun. It's the people. We keep hearing, you know, we're going to do this to cut crime. We're going to do that to cut crime. Why aren't we hearing people now, it's bad to say, why aren't we hearing the death penalty for rapists, for murderers, molesters? If it's a hundred percent deal, put them in the chair. They say it costs a million dollars. Sussex number one right now thinks a hundred and two thousand a year per inmate. Nothing is going to change when there's no consequences. You know, we just had that little girl down here over in Wakeville. Dead to rights, he should have been in jail for life. He's going to be out. You know, we had the boy over here that was killed. Dead to rights, he's going to be out. He had, I think, a lot, from what I understand, was already in trouble. What are the consequences? We need the consequences for the people that do stuff, not the consequences for people that are doing what is right to protect themselves. I will stop, and you can, I will stop, I don't give a shit if I see somebody broke down. I see somebody with a blown tire. I see somebody that needs help. I will stop. I don't care. That is what people do. That's what good people do. And I try to. You know, back when I was younger, I did all the drinking and all, none of that really affected any of it. I was still that same person. We got people out here now, especially in Middlesex, a lot of elderly people that want to be able to protect themselves because they know. Oyster Festival night, for instance, I called the guy that was drunk. He was coming down seventeen the wrong way. And it took eleven and a half minutes. Almost eighteen cars got bit heavily. Eleven and a half minutes. Well, if that was your child, you know, it's the consequences of actions, not the action and consequences.
Lou Star, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Lou Star, three six six, Hinkle, Salute. And, you know, I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of this. I'd like to see how it passes tonight while you've got the chance. You know, it's been said that a just government comes with the consent of the people. And our constitution, much talk tonight about the constitution, that comes from the people as well. And it's my understanding that the people are still vested with the right to abolish that constitution if we succeed in it. That's something we forget. We want to acquiesce to the courts to tell us what to do. Somebody else to tell, we don't want to do the difficult work of saying this is it. You know, our founding fathers pledged their lives and their personal fortunes to give us the rights we have. And here we're frozen in a deadlock, concerned about litigation costs and grant monies. Grant monies that are saying that, fathers, I'm sure would deem to be immoral because we're going to lay that debt at the feet of future generations. The will of the people is what matters. And I think it's quite obvious here tonight what the will of the people is. Almost three dozen counties have done similar things like this. We need to do it. It's a political message we need to send to these people. They think that they, because they got a majority in Richmond, in the state legislature, that, you know, they've got this writ of power to attack our constitution against the will of the people. And I don't think so. It's time for the people, y'all tell, y'all are their voice. We want to tell them, no, this is not our will. Our state has effectively been gerrymandered with the intentional influx of immigrants and out-of-state money so that they could bring about a majority necessary to attack our constitution. We want to acquiesce to courts that have themselves been infiltrated by the very people that want to rewrite our constitution and strip us of our rights. And it's time for us to draw our line politically and legally. I'm sure there's much to be litigated as this goes on and it comes to compensation. I don't think it's, you know, when you say an unalienable right that shall not be infringed, I don't think you have to be a constitutional father to figure out that today you're a law-abiding citizen with an AR in your gun safe, and tomorrow somebody shows up to take it from you, to take your property from you without compensation, and if you don't agree to it, you're going to become a felon. That, to me, is a bill of attainder, which is expressly forbidden in the Constitution. Whether it be a life of property, it's still a bill of attainder, and it's expressly forbidden. And so I would just call on y'all to pass this tonight, laws before you. I think the will of the people is ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Thompson, please.
I'm Margaret Thompson. I live at thirty-two Cardinal Trail in Deltonville. We have lived here in Middlesex County since nineteen seventy-one or so. It's the majority of my life. I did not grow up in Virginia. I grew up in the deep south. But I love Virginia. It's my home now. I love Middlesex County. I can't imagine a better place to live. I did not plan on speaking tonight, but listening to people, I had to think about my father's people, the Weas Man of French. Most of us have read, reading wives worth, Longfellow's, that point, the evangelium. But that point doesn't begin to describe the agony and desperation of the Acadian peoples and the tragedies that they endure. Most people don't even know that many of the widows and the children, the orphans... Most people don't even know that many of the widows and the children, the orphaned children who died, whose parents died during the deportations, were sold as slaves and were forced into indenture throughout the thirteen columns. In doing genealogy, I wondered, "How did they let that happen?" And it all came to the fact that the Acadian people were peaceful people. They were known as the neutral French, and they refused to swear allegiance not only to the King of England, but also to the King of France. They had developed their own culture, and all they wanted to do was to live in peace on their own. So when the English brought in a new governor who demanded that they swear allegiance to the English king, and they refused, they were told, "Okay, well, we need to take a census. We need to know how many guns each household owns, and how many men and young boys in that household can shoot the guns." Well, they had suffered and endured many of the English laws, and they kinda laughed about it. And so they went along with it, let the English take the census. After a while, they were bombing one day, and they saw ships coming into the bay. And the next thing they knew, the English was confiscating their guns and their boats so they could not escape. Now, I've heard a lot about courts, and let the court decide what is constitutional and what isn't. Well, that's the way it should be. But we recently have seen where our American courts are no longer the courts that they used to be, but the judges legislate on the benches. The Acadians had judges and courts. What good could that do then? Please pass this resolution tonight. Do not let apathy or naivety destroy and just keep you from doing so. Thank you.
This concludes the list of folks who had signed up. If there's anybody else that changes their mind and wants to speak, sir?
I'm Steve Larson. I live at 183 Berix Mill Road, Hoppe, Virginia. Didn't come up here to threaten or, I'm not an aggressive person, or be disrespectful to anyone up there on the board. But I enlisted in the Marine Corps in nineteen sixty-eight while I was still in high school. I took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. I was a combat veteran. I fought in the old war that this country has fought so far that when we were to come home, we were advised not to wear our uniforms because we might get spilt. I'm proud of my service. When I came home from Vietnam, for three years, I had to sleep with a gun by my bed. Not only was the house locked, but the bedroom door was locked. Locking the house didn't make me feel safe. Locking the bedroom door did not make me feel safe. But having a gun by my bed made me feel safe. The liberals, the extreme liberals, have been chipping away, are trying to chip away at our Constitution, from the Electoral College to our gun laws. It's not gonna happen. Regardless of how this turns out, no one will peel my guns from my hands. I love the outdoors, I love to hunt. This year, on opening day, I killed the biggest buck that I've been hunting for, for eighteen, since I was eighteen years old. I couldn't have done that with a slingshot. No one will take my guns from me regardless of how this turns out.
Right for the Second Amendment? Please pass. Is there anyone else that wants to address the Board of Public Commentary? Have you already spoken? Each person gets one appearance. Okay. I'm sorry, those are the rules.
Thank you, man. Thank you. My name is Gordon Anderson. I'm at 497 Lynch Lane. I'm originally from Lancaster County, Whitestone, Virginia, born and raised. Left here when I was thirteen years old. Came back forty-five years later. Loved Middlesex County. And I urge you gentlemen and men to pass this. I was about to say that when I was a young boy, my grandfather taught me and my two brothers that guns do not kill people, it's the person behind the gun. We have a problem in this country, but we never notice. We wanna teach sex education to our children before they're thirteen years old. Why don't we teach hunter's safety? Why don't we teach kids about these guns? This is the problem that's going on today. And I don't wanna get into the political thing, but I'm gonna say this. Patrick Henry, three-time governor of Virginia, you know what he said to his wife on his death down in bed? And I'm not judging nobody. He said, "Righteousness exalts a nation, and sin is a reproach." This is the same man who said, "Give me liberty or give me death." If you let this go on, when you've got a governor of Virginia who believes in abortion, and to me, that is murder. There's no other way to explain it. I urge you tonight, if you let them take these guns, it's gonna go further. Please pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Public Commentary?
James McMullin, 473, Pliny View Road. My first thing, I'm gonna give you Nathaniel Baynes' speech, the most important man in American history, least talked about, died in 1816. Jim sixteen seventy-six. I'm gonna say that. I grew up in Smurrt, Georgia, went to a modern middle school, and it was, it was like art because it was a new school. And you could take the walls down, and there was a sixth-grade pod, a seventh-grade pod, eighth-grade pod. And you could, they had three teachers per pod. I only remember three teachers' names at that school. And you could take the dividers down, and all three teachers teach a big class, sit at the third grade, or you could leave them up. We came to school on a Monday morning. We were studying the Holocaust and Hitler's Germany, and we weren't visiting. So we came to school on a Monday morning, and all the dividers were down. I think I was in the seventh grade. So anyway, those teachers were the biggest adventures you'll ever met in your life. We couldn't get up and go to the bathroom. Kids were here making gas, there were parent-teacher conferences. There was, a lot of kids were being taken out of school. This went on for a week. You had to ask permission, you couldn't talk, you had to sit straight up at your desk. And on Friday, I'm trying to make a long story short, you had to live and do the experience. On Friday, young kid, Gino Owens, had big arms, real quiet, his dad made him chop firearms all the time. Gino Owens stood up with a sign hanging around his neck, and he said, "Give me liberty or give me death." Every, there were dry members, all three of those teachers were crying. But that's the upbringing I had in the, speaking of what the man has spoken of a minute ago. They're not teaching this in our schools. They're not teaching us history. And if you wanna get it, and you wanna tear down the statues and not teach our children proper American history, we're beginning to repeat it. And Ike said, when he made the German people march through the concentration camp, to see what they had done, he said, "And I want y'all to take pictures." Because someday, somebody's gonna say this didn't happen. That those people, those six million Jewish people, that's just the name of you, they're still walking amongst us with the cat whose own girl. This Second Amendment was not put in the Constitution to protect my right to go out and hunt deer. It was put in there to protect me from you, and you, and these people in Richmond, who was there to protect me from all of them. Way to go.
Any other citizens wish to address public comment?
My name is PJ Fletcher. I live in Salute, Virginia. I'm a father of three. Trying not to be emotional because arms are a big part of my family. I have a seven-year-old, fourteen-year-old, and a four-year-old. All three of them shoot firearms. They shoot AR-15s, they shoot AK-47s, they shoot Glock pistols, safety pistols, everything. I teach my kids gun safety.
Amen.
My, my older son, he had a, he had a friend over. And his friend went to him and said, "Hey, let's go find his dad's key to his gun safety, let's deliver the guns." And because I have morals in my household, my son said, "No, we can go to my dad and ask him, and he will show us." And that's what's wrong with American society. That's what's wrong with Richmond, that's what's wrong with DC, there's no morals.
Right.
The worst thing I've ever did is have a window to take it. And come January twentieth or eighth, January eighth, whenever they're gonna pass this bill, because of the SB sixteen, I'm gonna be a felon. And you're gonna come to me and tell my kids that your dad's a felon who goes to work forty-eight to sixty hours a week, legally bought, all the guns that I passed back on my checks, because that is the law, unless you buy it from a private citizen. That their dad is a felon, and I'm going to prison because I like shooting sports with my kids. I'm a member of the Middlesex Sports Shooting Club. I'm a member of USKSA Practical Shooters. I do two matches twice a month. AR-15s are used in those matches. There's forty people at any given time in a closed-range environment, and not one of those people have been hurt or injured. It's not the gun. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address public comment?
Hello. My name's Debbie Anderson. I'm from Urbana, Virginia. I just wanted to express my point of view. My husband is a retired police officer. I just recently, in the past year, expressed my desire to learn how to handle a gun properly, learn the safety, so I could protect and defend myself. My husband travels extensively. Now, it's been based on my experience, and I'm not knocking the police, but anytime the police are called to my neighborhood, response time is fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes. So if someone broke into my house and I didn't have the means to defend myself, am I supposed to wait for the police while an intruder is there, ready to shoot me?
No.
Or am I supposed to be able to defend my life? I would be no match for a man, a big man breaking into my house. No match whatsoever. I'm a firm believer in the Second Amendment. I agree with the people that came before me, who expressed the purpose of what the Second Amendment is for. I'm not a wild, crazy shooter. I'm very responsible. I go to the range and I practice, and I learn from experienced people. I have no desire to kill anyone. I just want the right to defend myself without being felon and without having to go to jail because I want to live.
Amen.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address public comment? I see a hand in the back, please come forward.
Hey, everyone. My name's Josh Fabé. I live in 72 Funos Road, Waterbury, Virginia. I've lived in Middlesex for about ten years, and the reason why I'm here tonight, because I normally don't do this kind of stuff, but it's my first time publicly speaking, but this issue is important. The legislation coming proposed out originally is going to make most of the people in here govern, just like you're saying. And I, for one, am not gonna comply with that kind of stuff. There's laws on the books, aren't there? US Code 242, I believe, that is illegal for people like yourselves, people that we elected to represent us, to make laws to govern us, that it's illegal for you to deprive us of our rights. And it's kinda concerning that we're even having this discussion when it's already illegal for you to even be talking about it. So I really urge y'all to pass the resolution, even if it's just a resolution. What it does is it tells the community, "We're not gonna be the ones to deprive you of your rights. We're not gonna break the law. We're not gonna do that to you. We're gonna protect you like we swore that we were gonna do."
Right.
Okay? That's the big decision. I really hope that you guys will do that. I really hope you'll pass it, even if it is just symbolic, at least we know you guys are there to protect us. We elected you to do that, we expect you to do that, and we will not comply with anything that Richmond is talking about, the problems of our rights. But this is further than just the Second Amendment. This body has Fourth Amendment rights, Fifth Amendment rights, First Amendment rights, everything.
Right to assemble?
Right to assemble, yes. So please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have had a very robust comment period. We have heard everybody that's signed up, and I've tried to... Okay, we have had a very robust comment period. We have heard everybody that signed up and tried to put much latitude in place. I feel like we let people speak after that, but I think it’s probably appropriate at this point to go ahead and close the public comment period. I would like to thank all the citizens that took time to come out tonight. I was very impressed with the lack of redundancy in people’s opinions and their convictions. It was very enlightening. So, uh, thank you for that with the way we had a closed public comment period. And move on to item 8B, which is the resolution for Second Amendment sanctuary designation. At this point, I would like to call on Chief Law Enforcement Officer David Bush to, uh, address us with his comments and experiences.
Usually it’s today afternoon, but I think it’s evening now.
Oh, yeah.
About ten days ago, I know that I started receiving phone calls about these, uh, proposed new laws that Richmond wants to bring before the General Assembly, for the next assembly. It started with a, I received over a hundred and twenty-five calls, probably a good portion of some of the people back here, asking me where do I stand on the Second Amendment. We also learned that other counties were putting the resolutions together, and I think that’s why we appeared tonight. So, give you a little brief history. In Virginia, there’s one hundred and twenty-three elected sheriffs. Presently, in the Virginia Sheriff’s Association, there are eight thousand four hundred and sixty-nine deputies. Sheriffs are chief law enforcement officer in many of the rural areas. So, today, because our association knows which counties are getting ready to vote on this resolution, I’d like to let everyone here know where we stand. This is a resolution supporting the rights of the law-abiding citizens to bear arms. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution provides the right for the people to keep and bear arms. Whereas the Virginia Sheriff’s Association supports the Second Amendment and the right to people, for the people to keep and bear arms. Whereas the Sheriff’s Association acknowledges and supports the restrictions and the, uh, the restrictions and the transportation of firearms by those convicted felons would be illegal. Whereas the Virginia Sheriff’s Association expresses concerns on introducing federal legislation that specifically restricts law-abiding citizens from purchasing and price, assessing and transportation of firearm is legitimate for personal reasons. Therefore, being resolved by the Virginia Sheriff’s Association expresses common, a common sense of concern regarding legislative efforts that will restrict the law-abiding citizens from exercising their Second Amendment rights. This was adopted on the fourteenth day of September back in two thousand and nine. The legislation that’s brought forth already, and if that was to be passed, the sheriffs would support the Constitution as I would of the United States for the people to bear their arms.
Thank you, Sheriff. And before opening this up to my fellow board members, there was one speaker that asked about the, what I can say, legal vetting of this resolution. And inasmuch as it is a want and wish and a desire exists to send a political message, there is no foreseen legal or monetary damages arising from this. Is that, is that correct, Madam Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, if you’re referring to the one on the screen, I guess there are two directions. I didn’t review this.
Okay. I wanted to answer that question if somebody thought we were moving forward with something that hadn’t been legally dead. All right. At this point, we have a, uh, resolution before us. Uh, we’ve got the ability to discuss it amongst ourselves. You’ve got the ability to make a motion. You’ve got the ability to draw a number of things.
I would like to discuss this. And first, what I wanna know right now, everybody that wants us to pass this resolution tonight, same. That’s what I want to see. Thank you. All right. So, you got ninety-five or more percent people that want us to pass this resolution? Okay. All right. Um, I heard things that say, you know, this is not our job. But what our job is, is to get to our legislators and let them know how you feel because we represent you out there. Now, this issue has been going on. I see we got over thirty-some counties. I know King Wimba had three hundred people. And it’s just like you and I, rural people. This is a rule against urban. And see, a lot of people don’t know about country people. Country people, I can tell you, I raised up with a Daisy BB gun. And I know a lot of y’all have. And I’m just saying, you know, you have families that, you know, hunt and do a lot of things. And, uh, and city people don’t realize it. Also, uh, I would like to say, it was something saying, um, uh, we’re making, we’re anticipating laws that have been made. But you know, to get with the General Assembly, you gotta realize, you gotta get ahead and hurry. Let them know how all these rural county people. You know, this is not Wayne Jessup, but I, you know, this is how I feel, but also, this is how you feel and we represent you. And that’s what people gotta realize. And that’s the difference between city people and rural people. And, and, and you gotta, you gotta realize that, uh, what was said today. Because you know, if we decide to do what we wanna do, then, you know, we’re using, using to you. And I’m just wanting what’s right for citizens of all counties and all rural counties. Regardless of, uh, what goes on in the city. I wish there were just two different rules, a city rule and a county rule. Because county, city, county people live differently than the city people. And, and, you know, we need to still have our Second Amendment rights to bear arms. And keep it like it is. There’s still a changing and out and turning things around. And, uh, it, it’s, you know, the legislature is where we gotta look at. That’s what you gotta look at. Our legislators, let them know how we feel. And, and by me looking at this and looking over everything, yeah. And my opinion here, we’re gonna pass a resolution tonight if the votes are there. And I think we should because we represent you.
Make a motion. Any other comments or questions or discussions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. How do you like to speak? I am very concerned about this resolution. Very, very concerned. For all practical purposes, this legislation, sorry, not legislation, resolution suggests that if our state government or our federal government passes the law which we as people, it doesn’t matter whether it’s Pete Mansfield or who you are, we don’t agree with it, that we will instruct our, our sheriff’s department not to enforce it or we will indicate in any way that we won’t enforce a duly authorized law. You know, I appreciate that comment. Pete Mansfield can’t interpret the Second Amendment law. If Pete Mansfield, if, I’m sorry. If I interpreted the Second Amendment law, I would like to own a small, yield, neutral weapon. I would like to be able to wipe out a whole county at one time. Ninety-five percent of us stood up. I don’t interpret the law. You don’t interpret the law. The different court systems interpret the law. All the ladies and all the, everybody speak. I, I really can’t be part of a group that indicates that we will suggest not following the law.
The famous lawyers have said the law is an ass. They will push something through there.
Well, can you please comment? I just ask the rest of our group to consider what will happen to funding the Mental Sex County. Uh, I ask you what will happen to grants that we get from the state if we are. To have our meetings over, please. We have our civil meeting tonight for this term and everyone gets to speak their piece. I ask you also, as a citizen of Mental Sex, what if, what if we instruct our sheriff’s department or in any way indicate that we don’t want the laws of, of our state or federal government to be enforced? What, what do you think would happen if somebody, idiot that he is, takes a weapon and kills twenty-eight kindergarten students like happened in Forreststown? I, I ask you to think about it because I believe those twenty-eight students’ parents would have one hell of a lawsuit against Mental Sex County.
They murdered his mother to get the gun.
Folks, please. I, I am no attorney. I hope I was accused an engineer, but I’m not a attorney. But I, I do think that I can read the law and the law says that we, as Mental Sex County, we as the Board of Supervisors, we have absolutely nothing to do with what is passed in Richmond. And what you’ve heard in Richmond so far are ideas that came from the government. I don’t particularly agree with all of them since the Ten Shot Magazine. For twenty-two, I think a ten, more than the Ten Shot Magazine, I think is perfectly okay. And with your date, if you’re talking about your Daisy BB gun, obviously more than the Twenty-Two Shot Magazine is okay. It’s the high power of the magazine.
That’s what the law is for. You’re trying to dictate.
Folks, folks, please. Let them speak.
The people have spoken, but you’re obviously not listening.
See, I think we need to be respectful. We need to duck in here and not do, to escort you out because that’s what I suggest. Just be respectful, let them speak, and then, you know, be more, because we got a duck in here. Next time we hear somebody shouting, man, sit down, listen down.
You’re not gonna listen to the people? Then why are we here? I’m leaving.
That’s good. Thank you.
That’s not a lie. Mr. Chairman, if you have anything else to add? I was elected to try and make decisions which I think are good for the county. I do not think this passing this resolution would be good for our county. I think it would be financially harmful and moreover, I don’t like the message that it sends that we do not respect the laws of our country. I, I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, this is discussion amongst board members, the board, any comments that have been made or?
Yeah, I’d like to correct something that I clearly did miscommunicate or that was misunderstood. I purposely did my best to get out in front of this because the public, public comment, uh, process frustrated me as a citizen. This notion that I get three minutes and then I get to hear this board deliberate, uh, before I know how the board feels about the issue. Now, given that we haven’t had a lot of time to assess this issue, and I felt like I had heard enough from the constituents that had been calling me in the last week, that I tried to make my position known, hopefully with intent that people do see that I’m willing to listen and be representational. But the one point that I tried to make, and I think it led the people that are really helping in one direction to try to corner me into a position that I do not hold, is I was suggesting that if this truly is symbolic and it is sending a message to Richmond that we are one more rural county that fears that our Second Amendment might be tread upon, um, I think we might be missing an opportunity and I think we might be missing a train. That’s what I was trying to say. And I’ll just be brief on this. The reality is, the Attorney General has declared this in his mind, this symbol. Most of you, I think, understand that. Some of you are adamantly opposed to that line of thinking. We’re not all gonna agree on that. My way of thinking is, is that if this is symbolic, are we doing enough? And why am I saying that? Is, is the Second Amendment, uh, as it stands, as it’s currently interpreted, uh, by each and every individual in the room, the most important issue facing me? Probably not. But to everybody in this room, we’re darned close. You’re being very loud and clear with me. This is the most important issue to you. I’ve not seen a lot of you show up at these meetings. You obviously, many of you don’t understand how they’re run. This is typically where we deliberate before putting together a motion and making a decision. But my point was, if we’re just sending a symbolic resolution, are we not ignoring the bigger train? That we have diminishing population in this and these thirty other counties who have a deep affinity for rural living and all that comes with it, whether it’s deer hunting or only assault rifles or any number of other things that are in need to rural communities? Are we doing enough in sending a resolution that is simply symbolic and creating a sanctuary county that really has no legislative standing? When we might do something more, that was the point I was trying to make. And in light of the fact that Northern Virginia and Richmond community populations are growing, Fredericksburg is not a Fredericksburg you remember from twenty years ago, there’s gonna be more of these counties flipping. Okay? So, if we’re making our stand right now, uh, I just, I feel like it’s pretty feeble. And I think we should rather be looking at those other thirty or probably forty or fifty by the time it’s all said and done. Look at those other counties and look at what we have in common. Uh, I think you suggested, Wayne, that you maybe even wish that rural and urban communities had some different rules to live by. We live in a Dillon Rule state and all of that authority is at Richmond. So whoever holds the majority, whether it’s a small majority or a large majority, those are the rules that apply to the state. The reasons some of us, maybe myself, got a little bit frustrated that this is being funneled through the Board of Supervisors is we already have very little authority. That authority, by virtue of the hundred twenty-three-year-old illegal lives with the state. And so my first instinct was, we need to call our state legislature. But what I’m hearing from you, I think, is we need a vendor voice. We’re out working. We don’t have time to ride to Richmond and pick it. So we’re gonna use our Board of Supervisors, just like thirty other rural communities, and we’re gonna try to make a statement. I’m just questioning whether a symbolic statement does all that much. But with that, I will say I am in support of a resolution. I support. I support in particular the Boddatot Resolution that was passed earlier, uh, last week. And the county attorney and I have reviewed that just as we were doing this. The primary reason, reason I support the Boddatot, uh, resolution is that there’s less language. It’s very clear that we’re a sanctuary county and it doesn’t get into anything that leads to much of the consternation that I’ve heard from the constituents that I’ve spoken to and heard tonight. and heard tonight. What I'm hearing is, we want to be a sanctuary county. And those that don't want to be a sanctuary county, it's some of the language in some of these longer-form resolutions. If this thing is symbolic, let's go ahead and become a sanctuary county, let's send the message, and then let's get back to the rest of the agenda.
I'm sure this week, I'd be very proud to have this passed in my speech. All right. We'll adjourn the motion.
A motion is acceptable at this moment.
I would move that we pass a resolution with the language from the Boddatot County Resolution in support of making Middlesex County a second amendment sanctuary county. Can we pull the Boddatot up? I'd be happy to read it. That's the second one, that's Carroll County. And understand, you know, some of the folks that were talking about paper, there were a lot of these coming in real time, and we were receiving, and I know I got over 100 calls, maybe, as many as Sheriff Bushy, where, believe it or not, this job that we got elected to do does take a fair amount of time. So the paper was not Richmond politics, or DC politics, or strategic. It took a lot of reading, and these things were coming out fast and serious. And I even actually wrote my own, but I don't think anybody wants that. All right. Can I have my hearing? A resolution affirming the constitutions of the United States and Virginia, and declaring Middlesex County a second amendment sanctuary county. Whereas the members of the Board of Supervisors of Middlesex County have taken an oath to defend and uphold the constitutions of the United States and Virginia, and whereas the second amendment to the United States Constitution reads, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution reads, "That a well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people, trained to arms, is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state, therefore the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas the board has no legislative, regulatory, or enforcement authority related to the purchase, possession, transfer, ownership, carrying, storage, or transportation of firearms, ammunition, or components, or combination thereof, and counsel's suggesting we use the full quote, and that would be my motion, "other than news expressly authorized by statute as provided by Section 15.2-915 of Dakota, Virginia, 1950, as a matter and has no authority over the independent executions of the duty of the constitutional officers involved in law enforcement, and whereas the board is concerned that introduced legislation for the 2020 Virginia General Assembly, big tax, could infringe upon the rights guaranteed by the second amendment to the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution. And, and as I've learned over two years in this office, this is where we get into the meat of the thing, now therefore it be a result that the Board of Supervisors of Middlesex County declare Middlesex County a second amendment sanctuary county, and fully affirm its support to the rights ensured and protected by the constitutions of the United States and Virginia, including the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. And be a further result that the board urges the Virginia General Assembly, the United States Congress, and other agencies of state and federal government to vigilantly preserve and protect those rights by rejecting any provision of law or regulation that may infringe, have the tendency to infringe, or place any additional burdens on the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. And be a further result that the board directs its staff to forward a copy of this resolution to the county's elected representatives, in the Virginia General Assembly, and the United States Congress, and to the governor of Virginia. Do you want to ask Kelly to direct this?
Madam Chair, I just want to make, because you and I have discussed the Gloucester, and this one sounds negative from our legal advisor, is this on its firm ground as to the other resolution?
Mr. Chairman, what I would say is that if board members would each ask me to look over the piercing of legal format, I did make some changes, I don't think it should include bold taken on the code, I did make some other changes based on the actual quote, which I confirm, that it would have set the second amendment, it would have been Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution. So at those points, I would say I would use this as well. The Gloucester one is take one of the general counties, and we got one of the first counties. Boddatot is a little different, but I have no objection to the board considering that I have changed the convention and do it now.
Thank you, it would be my honor to second the motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, or Attorney, could we put into that one statement, and that statement is as designated by, or as interpreted by our courts?
No.
We always want to bring in the court!
Madam Chair, Attorney, has the floor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. I'd like to now turn that back to the board. You can modify any resolution of the majority vote, and that is maybe a bit that you'd like to highlight, the Gloucester one, where it references specifically the board action. But you can make any modifications to the resolution by the majority vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that has been duly seconded by myself, and we are open to discussion, because any last, certainly ahead of money to the hour.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would have some comments that I would like to add during this portion of the discussion before we take the vote. My concern with the resolution is not the statement itself, I only gun myself, I have great respect for our constitution and all of our rights set forth. My concern is that this matter is not under our responsibilities to administer the county. And I am concerned that we assume a role of representing individual citizens' views to our state legislatures, when in fact I believe those views are much more powerful individually. But primarily, as a matter of principle, and I have voted on, and stated this before, I think we should be focusing our time and our money on our county problems, like scrutinizing budgets and protecting taxpayers' interests. These types of resolutions divide us unnecessarily. They do carry a cost. We should be seeking common ground to solve the problems that are our responsibilities. I really am glad to see people here voicing their opinions on other topics here, I believe that that is an appropriate and good thing to do, and to have involvement. But I would say that diverting our attention in this way by something that we do not have jurisdiction over does have a cost. And I've been congratulated in the past for taking this position by many people who are here from this room. I plan to be consistent, I believe it's the right thing to do, I believe that it's appropriate for boards of supervisors to administer county documents. And we each have a very powerful voice to express to any of our elected representatives.
Hearing none for the discussion, or call for questioning. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same as aye?
I understand.
One abstention, one no, three for, the resolution carries. All right, good morning. Remove this, this all over in the meetings we could, so we wouldn't keep you all through all of our mundane business, but if we could have sort of an orderly retreat, so that we can get all of the business we've got in our session, that's it.
Thank you!
Good morning. Three hundred reasons. Okay, we've got four on five, Melissa, we are reconvened and ready for your comments.
All right. So we have successfully completed our first election in the new office, can you hear me? And everything went pretty smooth. I'd like to thank the officers of election, they do a really good job at what they do, and they seldom aren't recognized for their service. 2020 is going to be a really good election year for us. We start January 17, absentee voting for the March primary, followed by the June primary, and then the 2020 presidential election. We have new legislation that was introduced last General Assembly and approved, and that is what I'm here to talk to you about. House Bill 2178 was passed, and it's active with developing policies on ensuring the security and integrity of our voting equipment, our electronic poll books, and our computers through the county. So I'm working closely with the cabinet right now, completing the self-assessment of the county. We don't have to worry about our electronic poll books and our voting equipment per se, because they're never hooked to the internet, but our election management system that is the state database is done through our county network. So any mandated improvements from the state, hopefully will come with money from the state, because they were given money for security. But, as I said, I'm working closely on that. The other House Bill was 2790, which is no excuse absentee voting. And currently, right now, we have absentee voting 45 days before every election, and you have to have 20 excuses. So the new legislation is seven days prior to the election, seven days to seven days before the election. You don't have to have an excuse, you just come in the office and vote normal. And with that, our registered association knows that this is going to cost the locality money. It passed at the state level, very little funding on the fiscal impact statement, because at the state level, it's not a lot of funding, but at the local level, it is. So I was working with that, and asking to tell you all about it, that we're going to need a space for these seven days to kind of have like a precinct, an officer's election to work in. And fortunately, we closed the water view precinct after we bought new equipment, so we have spare equipment, we don't have to purchase that, which other counties have that burden upon them. So I just, so the report that I gave you, our work group for our registered association came up with a formula after talking to North Carolina, who has implemented, they implemented this law in 1999, so we have about 20 years of data from them, and we're estimating 1,532 voters in that one week, so my office is not large enough for that. So I'm asking for your support in the future when we come up with these space and anything that we need, parking. So we're going to need ample parking space, technology, security, all of the above, and for sure. Do you all have any questions? Can y'all let me get this over?
When will you know the space and the cost?
So I have, in that report, there was a guesstimate of the cost. I, without throwing anything out there, I have a tentative plan, but I, and I have to talk with all the parties involved before I make that public, to make sure it's possible. And there's also new legislation to extend that seven days to 45 days with no excuse.
How much does that change your current guesstimate? If we go from seven to 45, that sounds like a major, I mean, we went from zero to seven, right?
So in North Carolina, 60% of the voters who vote on Election Day vote early.
So if we had 45 days as opposed to seven, it would probably, we would see a similar change over time, if not immediately. Any other questions?
Thank you for the job that you did. Yes, ma'am. I would have done this during the public, but appears you had a taxing matter at that point. First of all, we want to thank the electoral board, and the registered office, and we want to thank all of you all for your past support in this transitional period, and as we have carried out elections during the past year. We could not have accomplished that issue without the backing of, the strong backing of this group, so we thank you. And to those party members of the Board of Supervisors, we say thank you, thank you, thank you, because you've been very sensitive to what we were trying to implement over that time period. But my one last point is that four letter word, called sign, and I am looking forward to us getting some signage up ASAP. In particular, because if we have to make that transition to move or to find a second location, first of all, people have to know where our primary location is so they can register. Secondly, we use that primary location as a balancing point, as a standoff point to wherever that particular station will be set up for the early voting. So we need your backing, we need your efficient and quick movement on this issue, if you'd be so kind to do so. Okay, otherwise, from all of us, to all of you, happy new year, and any other holidays that come in. Thank you.
Do you have any questions coming?
Any other questions? Hearing none, we've got two public hearings at 7:00 back at the courthouse, so we're going to reset us now to get back up there, and those transactives in the camp. So we are in reset.
Such reports, both of the ladies asked me if they could be excused, since they figured it was going to be awful late, this was their last meeting, so I hope nobody's upset that I excused them from making late reports tonight. Agency of staff reports, I don't see anybody here from VDOT, Dr. Gretz?
The VDOT staff said they had the Gloucester meeting tonight, and they did say that the one item of interest that they wanted to report, Mr. Chairman, was Coach Point Road is going to be posted with a lower speed limit due to a traffic study that they had done. And they should have that done over the next month.
Where is that road?
Uh, going down there.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And Dr. Gretz had said he was going to be here tonight, but he might got dissuaded by things running so late. If he shows up, we'll call him back. Social services is report-only, pages 53 through 55. We have heard the election updates from Melissa Welch. We'll go to regular agenda items, the EDA, Matt Walker and Michelle Brown, and I see other representatives. other representatives.
I guess I'll introduce this just here a little bit for the board. The board will recall, we've kind of visited this on and off for the last couple of years, around this time every year, when we kind of discover that we haven't taken really any action on this. I think last time it came up to the board, the board wanted more information about how much is owed, and I'm going to save the bulk of my remarks until after Michelle does her talk, and I think Gordon White is here tonight, he's the chairman of the EDA, he had a handout that he wanted to give the board as well.
That was a handout, good.
Yeah, okay, very good. So the board would take one. Michelle, you want to come up and give it all?
Absolutely.
And this is Chairman White.
This is from Gordon.
Yes, oh, that's from Michelle, this is from Gordon.
Good evening, kind of a calm, it's nice. I'm Michelle, I'm with the EDA and the Economic Development Tourism, and I'm speaking on behalf of the EDA. I have my chairman here and the vice chair with me, and we would like to request to the Board of Supervisors a forgiveness of a debt for the 2004 Courthouse Sewer Project. In April of 2004, funds were borrowed for the construction of a sewer plant to serve the courthouse and correctional facility. The proposed project was never completed. An arrangement was put into place whereby the EDA would reimburse the county for its debt service obligation. The exact details of the arrangement cannot be determined, as there's no record in either the Board of Supervisors or the EDA minutes of what transpired. The original principal amount was $390,000 with interest due of $84,762, over twenty-three-year bond payment repayment period, for a total due of the EDA of $400,74762. In 2015, this bond was refunded and rolled up with other outstanding county bonds in order to achieve a more favorable interest rate. The EDA began making payments in August of 2004, and payments were subsequently suspended, with a final payment being made on January 31st, 2018. A total of approximately $419,000 has been paid by the EDA to the county. A balance of approximately $52,000 remain. The difference in the original debt incurred in the remaining balance are attributable to the interest rates changed with the refinancing. Based on the recommendation of the county auditors and the lack of documentation, the EDA requests that it be released from making the $52,000 additional payments to the county for the courthouse sewer debt.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Did the auditors give reason for their recommendation?
We went to the auditors to discuss this with them, and if you all recall, we discussed it briefly about the same time last year, and that's what kind of triggered us to try to find something in the minutes, some written record. The best we could ascertain is it was a gentleman's agreement by the EDA and the board to move forward with paying for this sewer project that went nowhere. The auditors basically said, if you want to clean the matter up, you can do so with another gentleman's agreement, just to forgive the debt. With the board and the EDA involved in the activities that they're currently involved in, we've got an economic development tourism program, we've got the EDA contributing towards that, and then the board is contributing monies towards that as well, it seems a little redundant for us to be chasing monies around and passing monies back and forth. It seems like the discussion last year was along those lines, and one of the questions the board particularly had was, is there any written record of what was going on? And two, just how much is owed? And this is the debt service schedule that was wrapped up into the 2015 refinance, and Michelle's right, when we refinanced that debt, along with some of the school debt, we were very successful in our, in our marketing of that, we got a 1.52 percentage.
Not to be rude, the question was just what the reasoning for the auditor's recommendation was.
It was basically at our request, how do we, if we want to clarify this item, go about doing it?
All right, from the county's perspective, are we doing a better job, a worse job, or the same job of taking notes from meetings at this point, minutes?
I would say we're doing a much better job documenting agreements like this.
Same question to the EDA.
I feel like the more that we've been doing, the better records we are keeping as far as minutes, and actual MOUs and understandings and resolutions as well.
And specifically, if I may, just can you answer, an agreement like this today, we would have handwriting and the terms spelled out, and it would be a very clear paper trail on it. The nature of that project, if my memory serves, and I queried the former county administrator about what he could remember, former members of the EDA, the sewer project started off with the EDA, and then the board at the time felt that this was a better project, to be under the auspices and guidance of the board, and then, for a variety of reasons, the project really just died on the vine.
Michelle, for assuming a $52,000 windfall comes your way, is there certain things that you have designs on doing with that? Is there a financial necessity beyond an auditor wanting to clean up the books?
Well, we do, the EDA does fund my Virginia River Realm, and that's $25,000 a year, and I have a wish list that I would like to possibly get into NBC commercials, but that's a good $20,000. So we have some ideas of things that we would really like to do with that money that would really help the community at large.
Also, this money's probably not just sitting somewhere waiting to transfer it to the county?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't quite understand how we can spend $390,000 and not have anything.
I think it's, my understanding, was it used for site engineering possibly? It was already spent.
Engineering back in the early and mid 2Ks, that ultimately was tabled by the Board of Supervisors in 2008, I believe, for the sewer, sewer system in Saluda.
Well, Matt, if my memory serves me, we had this discussion last year, and the question was, what records can we dig up, and what's the amount? The answer is, we don't have any records, here's the amount.
It's definitely a gentleman's agreement on this, and it's something that none of us in the EDA were around, none of you all were around, Matt wasn't around, so we kind of have to.
I was clearly around when it died.
So, can I ask, so this shows up on your books as an obligation? Is that what would be cleared, is the obligation? And does it show up in the county accounts as a debt due to the county? Is there a hole in our books looking for $52,000?
It does show up as a revenue source, and the county and the schools currently divide, I believe, this debt service package between the two of us.
But that includes other things.
That includes other things. The majority of the 2015 refinancing was dealing with school funding, I believe, because we refunded previous school.
Okay, but in our accounting, it would show up as $52,000 we're anticipating being repaid over a period of?
To 2027.
In the next seven years? Okay, so that's less than $10,000 a year. So even if we were making a lot of assumptions in our budget, we're talking about $10,000 a year, which is something we can adjust to pretty easily, right? Okay. The other question I have, or the clarification is, in additional payments, I think in the way this is accounted for or reported, it would make more sense to me to have that noted as interest, to note that the principal has been repaid. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I'm probably.
Well, the principal was 390,000, and the interest was 84. We're missing 52, well, that's interest, it's not the principal.
It's still principal and interest.
Well, and the remaining portion of the EDA's responsibility for the principal and interest payments is on the screen, and that's in your packet. So that's the remaining amount that's due from here on out, on that specific refinance.
Okay, well, here's my concern, I think this makes sense, I get it, I understand, you gotta, we gotta clean this up, I get that, and I'm all for cleaning things up. I just want to make sure that anything we do with this does not have any negative interpretation influence on any expectations related to the Cook's Corner project. Do you see what I mean?
I do.
Okay.
I cannot foresee any.
Because I don't want the implicat, we've been very clear that certain money comes from the EDA, that certain money comes from a private foundation, that certain money comes from grants, and certain money comes from the county. And I think we need to, you know, adhere to the integrity of that, to the extent we can, knowing that it's a multi-year project.
Well, we will, with the grants, there will be many, many contracts required for that, so there will be a paper trail and more with those grants and the Cook's Corner project.
So to be clear, this, whatever's done today to clear up something that is an obligation, does not in any way set a precedent on policy for financial transactions between the EDA and the county?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think they're two separate issues, exactly.
With the county auditor's recommendation, did they look at this and say, it may make more sense to just pay it off instead of carrying the interest, or?
Well, if my memory serves, about three years ago, when the matter first came up with the EDA, that was one of their questions, could we just pay this off and forego the interest? But because we refinanced it, we have a debt service schedule that we pretty much have, we have to adhere to, unless we pay the whole series off, which is indeed not my recommendation at this time, at 1.52%.
Yep.
All right, is any other questions or discussion of the EDA? If not, the chair will support a motion to do something with this.
I move that the board take over the principal and interest payments for the EDA on this matter, and not refer to it as a gentleman's agreement.
I have a motion, it's a second.
I'll second it.
Double second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, do we have Stanley Pest and Sun Tribe here, ready to go forward? Have both parties? Okay, well, at this point, we'll go into the public hearing part of the meeting.
Are we doing supervisor comments and reports after?
We'll have to do that, these folks, yeah, these folks were set up to meet at seven, and we just decided to get as much business done as we could in the ten minutes beforehand. So, special exception number 201906, David, that puts you on deck.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, everybody hear me? I don't.
I'll try this one, Dave, I think this one worked last time. I think so. Go use it to plenty of questions.
Do you have a hand?
No. All right, I'll flip for you. I'll flip for you.
This is special exception 201906, of course, submitted by Stanley Pest Control Incorporated. The request is for approval of a special exception to allow a service business to be located on a .317 acre parcel of land in the LDR zoning district. It's in accord with Section 7-3.9 and 7.4 of the Middlesex County zoning ordinance. The property for which the special exception is being requested is located at 3815 Time Water Trail in Jamaica, further identified as that particular tax map parcel of 7-33B, of course, in the Jamaica District. This is a quick narrative, I've already gone through some of these items. We can see the existing land use is fairly, for the most part, it's vacant, it's a building that's been there for some time. People that I've spoken to said it used to be a general store, it could have been, a couple businesses have gone in there since then, but for the most part, it's vacant. This is, as you can see, it's a small piece of property located on the Time Water Trail Route 17, right at the corner of Canoe House Road, and there's a couple areas that show the overhead. We have a plot of this particular property, shows how small this piece of property, it's a small piece of property, there's existing, the existing structure in it will be used like it is, there's no intention to enlarge it. And that's the structure, as you can see, it's been there for quite a few years, and that's where the intent is. So we know the request is for approval of a special exception to allow this business, it's actually for pest control business, to be located on this piece of property. This is a criteria, this is in your staff reports, I think you've probably read through this, it pretty much complies with all these items.
Pretty much, or complies?
It does, it does, I'm sorry, I should be more specific, it does. Of course, based on the, this analysis, request is in conformance with the requirements of 7.39, 7.4, and 20-5, B of the Middlesex County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this special exception, and Planning Commission recommendation was unanimous, one absent, one abstention. We'll make the comment that the abstention was Ms. Hart, who owns the property all around there, she, as she's indicated, she has no opposition to the project, but abstained just to, because she was a joint and property owner. This property is also in the area where they're going to be doing the improvements for the Bayport campsite, we'll be working with VDOT to make sure that they have proper ingress, egress to this property when those improvements are constructed. That concludes this presentation, I'll turn it over to the chair, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Gretz, before we open public comment?
Wayne, are you hearing anything up there?
Nothing, no, it's clear, it's all good.
Okay, hearing none, well, up here to public comment, if any members of the public or the applicant would like to address the board.
Lud Kimbrough from Deltaville, I have been working with Jerry Stanley Pest Control for ten or fifteen years, I guess, both at my home and at another organization where I serve as secretary treasurer. They have been extremely responsive, they've been responsible, they take extra care, to always leave the premises in perfect condition, and I really couldn't recommend them any more highly, so. I hope you'll approve their special exception.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the period of public comment.
Well, I would just like to make a motion for special exception 201906, we definitely need more business up in the county.
Seconded. Motion duly seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Moving right along to 201904, David, I guess that puts you back up there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is, this was, is an ordinance amendment initiated by Sun Tribe Development. I'm just gonna, this is, what this does is, it's for the purpose of actually exempting solar facilities from this requirement to have the 100-foot of public street or highway frontage, and of course, the one acre minimum is not an issue in this case, but it's being addressed here as well. I'm gonna go back in time a little bit, if we remember back to the first of the year, we, Sun Tribe came forward with an amendment to allow in VC smaller-scale solar facilities, utility-scale solar facilities in VC, and we remember, we have that thousand-foot buffer that we've been talking about, it's been, you know, and it's in Brian Major's application to reduce that thousand-foot buffer. So what we didn't look at back in, a year ago, because it wasn't as site-specific, was if we're going to have, it's counterintuitive to make the applicant go back a thousand feet, and then they still have, make them adhere to this requirement that requires them to be on, have frontage. be on, have frontage on a highway. You can't have both. So, in a sense, this is a housekeeping or cleaning, we're just cleaning up the ordinance so it, so it, it's a reconciliation, is what it is. So, it's, you know, it was part of and embedded in the request by Brian Major. That was one of the more, that was one of the more simpler components of that request. That was much more complex. And this will be removed from that particular request when that comes forward. But staff recommends approval of this. It's basically a house cleaning issue. You've had your staff reports. You've read through the history on it. But staff recommends approval of it, and planning commission unanimously recommended approval of it as well. So, if the board has any questions of me while I'm up here, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just one question. You're not saying this fixes it for the Brian Major project. This is a cleanup of the ordinance that's unrelated to that.
Yeah, Mr. Krebs, this was embedded in that request.
Yeah.
It's one of the items that need to be addressed, but this is, this is not reducing the 1,000 feet. In this case, 1,000 feet stays true. And they will be coming forward with their request as well shortly, which they do adhere to the 1,000 feet. So, I just.
It seems like less frontage accomplishes one of the complaints about the solar.
Precisely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Krebs?
Yeah, I don't understand how that only having 100 feet is adequate. I don't know how big the solar farm is going to be. And does it have plannings to shield it from the main roadway? Or am I talking about totally the wrong thing?
Well, the.
And you can say that.
Yeah, well, you're fine. This requirement is probably, it's the only requirement in the village community special exception criteria. And the requirement, any, this would be true of a solar facility or any special exception request in village community, that they have 100-foot of frontage and one acre. And the ordinance committee has even started to look at this and said, does this make total sense for all, anything in village community? We've had discussions about this. The ordinance committee may go back and start looking at this holistically, but for the purpose of this, of Sun Tribe's request, we don't want to bog down their request with some of our other house cleaning for other matters. So, we're leaving this alone, just dealing with it for solar facilities now, and we'll look at the whole picture later on, because if you, it just, sometimes, certain sites might not require a whole 100-foot of frontage. It may not, and I think it was done in there, it was put in there probably in fear that the use would be too intense, and it would need that 100 feet to buffer the properties. But there's other ways you can buffer properties, and there are those other ways you can deal with that. So, does that help explain it some?
Well, yes, but don't you have to have some kind of vegetation too?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That, the planning component will be part of their special exception request as well, a screening component. This is just, they would not be able to get a special exception because they do not front on a public highway. So, they would not qualify for the special exception. It's counterintuitive if we're pushing them back and then telling them they have to be on the right-of-way. It doesn't make, it doesn't compute.
Dave, I mean, the screening that you're talking about is something that, once you've passed the special exemption process and you go for a permit, one of the conditions of the permit is that you have that screening. So, we're in the process for these kinds of projects, and correct me if I'm wrong, the first step is to see if it's, if you need to get a special exemption. Whether you get it through a special exemption or if it's by right, then you're going to apply for your actual permit, and there are conditions of that permit that require the screening. They're totally separate, so they're going to have the screening as well.
That I did know.
And to add on to that, the board will get a chance to look at their screening.
Go ahead.
It's a component of their special exception. So, that's something the board will get to analyze and weigh in on.
Any other questions, Mr. Krebs? If not, we'll open public comment. Any members of the public that would like to comment, or members of the public, or the applicants, excuse me.
Gordon White, Deltaville Chairman of the Economic Development Authority. We understand this is merely to clear up a conflict in the ordinances, and we have no objection to this at all. I just want to say that the EDA would like to see the board further study the general issue of location of solar facilities before approving anymore. We're concerned with the conflict of having solar facilities take up land areas that could be used for business addresses. Thank you. And thank you for clearing up the solar problem.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. White had a hand out on that as well.
That's already been around.
Well, this is a new one.
This is a new one.
Different issue.
I didn't realize that.
So, Mr. White, I don't want to be non-responsive to the notion of us conducting a study, but often these studies come with expenses. Beyond the 1,000-foot setback that we've already changed to make sure that solar plants are located away from our main thoroughfares, what is it you'd have us study?
Well, I thought when I appeared here, I believe in July, on a previous solar issue, that there was going to be an ordinance committee discussion of the whole issue of where you put solar facilities. The 1,000-foot setback strikes me personally as an excellent idea. I have no problem with that. It's just a case of not wanting solar facilities to freeze out other more, shall I say, economic activities.
Yeah, I think. Well, I think this is work in progress with the planning commission, is it not, David?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Just to answer both questions, we've got work in progress because you haven't finished doing your work, which would include.
The ordinance committee is working on, we're looking at the ordinance committees, the ordinance committee is looking at the solar ordinance as, in its entirety.
Gotcha.
And we're currently trying to gather more information. We're talking with other counties, and we don't want to rush this out too fast, because Ms. Lewis and I have been doing some research on different things with state code, so we're working.
I just wanted to address that John's concern, this is not really a study. This is what the planning commission is working on now.
Right.
We're not going to rush until we try to get it done right.
Yeah, this is, it's being worked on as we speak. Now, this month is, we've taken the highest this month because of scheduling and whatnot. Come the first of the year, we'll be back.
Very good.
I wasn't suggesting any study that would hire consultants, cost a lot of money.
Understood.
I would note that from my participation in the Middle Peninsula Planning District Committee, we understand a great deal of further regulation or prohibiting regulation is coming down from Richmond, or is likely to come down from Richmond in the next legislative session. And there may need to be a consideration of the county's fees to cover the cost of the county of inspecting such things. But that's beyond the EDA's purview. We just, we'd like to not freeze out other economic activity.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Request, because I think, I understand the ordinance is coming from the planning commission, but I think what Mr. White is advocating, I think there's an opportunity to do this in the review of the comprehensive plan, because that the future land use map that is guiding, I would just like to add on, I do think that being intentional and following that plan is advantageous to the county. And I understand that solar is not a zone, it's a special exception, but I think, I do think the plan is notable in that it was not addressed when it was written, appropriately so, it was a number of years ago. And when that's rewritten, it would serve us well to have some statement of the intentions of the county in this regard. I think would help future planners.
Yes, clearly, solar has come along since the plan was drawn up. Again, that's beyond the purview of the EDA, but our authorities voted unanimously to raise that question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Chairman White, as I understand the concern, the concern expressed by the EDA was that the county has invested a significant amount of time in the comprehensive plan to set aside certain areas as growth areas. And then the board and the EDA has invested a great deal of time and money and effort in trying to deploy water and sewer to these growth areas. And if solar farms are allowed to go in those growth areas set aside for future, future commercial growth or whatnot, then we're kind of cutting our nose up to spite our face a little bit, because we're investing a lot of time, treasure, and effort in trying to develop these nodes. And solar farms can go in areas that are not served by water and sewer.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to encapsulate that.
Could I ask, Dave, some of these growth nodes, how many of them are expanding more than 1,000 feet off of the main thoroughfares? Is there significant frontage or acreage that's, you know?
The Hartfield area does expand back towards Wake Road somewhat, almost back, I think back to Wake Road. As far, you know, there's a transition from more of a general business back to village community. Some of the nodes up in the northwestern part of the county are very narrow. They may not be much deeper than 1,000 feet.
Right. Okay.
So, if that gives you a better idea.
Yep.
There's Deltaville, you know, a bit more width there.
Gordon, does that complete your public comment on this subject?
Yes, I will say that the EDA is not opposing solar per se.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public or the applicant wish to address the board on this?
Sir, Bobby Joe, Sun Tribe Solar. Thank you for your time. This ordinance amendment allows us to do what we intend, which is to try to develop projects which are out of the way, least visible to the public, and properly screened. The main issue with the ordinance as it's currently written is the public street part of it. This allows us to front on a private section of roadway, which allows us to extend further away from the main thoroughfare.
Understood.
So, as Mr. Krebs indicated, this allows us to better meet the intent of the ordinance, which is to make these projects as least visible as possible.
Would the chair entertain a motion?
Well, we need to close public comment.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Perfect.
Is there anybody else that would like to address in public comment? Hearing none, we will close the public comment period and entertain discussion, motions, or whatever the, my fellow supervisors would like to do on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment, this is in the Hartfield District, but I have spoken with the applicant and visited the property, and I do think that it does make sense for this particular property and would indirectly, I guess, foster and encourage a business and entrepreneurship in Middlesex. And I would encourage approval of this ordinance change for this property.
I move that we approve ordinance amendment 2019-04.
We have a move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Duly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. So, this completes our public hearings tonight, which sort of out of order puts us back on our agenda. We covered the EDA debt contribution, and we'll move on to the budget schedule. Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet substantially, substantially similar budget calendar that has been reconciled with the school board's budget calendar at this point in time for your consideration and adoption. Of course, the new board, when they organize in January, they may alter meeting times. It could affect this. But as of right now, this budget calendar is reconciled with the schools. Reviewed the document with Dr. Grebs and Karen Murray, and they've kind of given it the okay as far as their dates and times. One thing in particular, just for the sake of time, I want to focus on is the meeting on, or the proposed meeting on January 10th. This is the board's strategic work session, if you will, on the budget. This is basically the opening of the budget season, so to speak officially, for the county. And I have preliminarily listed the top five items that were pretty much on the same agenda last year. I will have an update from the water system, hopefully being notified of their bidding of the project imminently. We, I'm really hopeful we'll have something from HRSD by then. We're still in negotiations on a couple of found points with the service agreement. And of course, I'm going to invite Bruce DeSimone from the Workforce Housing Foundation to give us an update on that portion of Cook's Corner. Michelle will come in and give an update with me along the Cook's Corner project on the economic development side. And of course, last but not least, and perhaps first on the agenda that day, if the board so inclined, is the board's strategic budget goals for the year. This gives staff an opportunity to hear from the board members on what they would like to see, what they would like the staff to focus on, and give us some direction on how we want to proceed. And as the board is very aware, this budget calendar is still the very inclusive budget process that we've developed for the county, where the board has hands-on help preparing the budget.
So, it just stands as printed in January. If new members have issues or whatever, then those can be dealt with.
For instance, if the new board decides that they want to have the meeting on Wednesday as opposed to Tuesday, then we have to alter it accordingly. One thing I will point out, given the timing of the days, our meeting in January is as late as it's ever going to be. It's seven days into the new calendar year, which that does have an effect at the back end. We adopt, deliberate, and potentially adopt the county schools and tax rates on April 30th. We have to have a school portion of the budget adopted April 30th to meet state code requirements.
Gotcha.
So, we don't have a whole lot of room to maneuver. But again, within this budget calendar, we have a series of tentative meetings throughout March. You'll notice, 10th, 17th, 24th, kind of built in. They're there if needed. It's entirely possible we finish the budget earlier this year. You never know.
Yeah.
A lot of that, I think, will depend on getting state data. And I would recommend the board approve this, and we'll see what the new board thinks of it in January.
You'd like approval on it now?
I would.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
Duly made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the schedule?
Just that I would ask that the county administrator share this as soon as it's approved with the new board members, so that we can be sure that those districts of Pine Top and Harmony Village are represented at every meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I've already reviewed this with both of the new.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. Next item of business is a request for memorial highway designation. I have reviewed this and talked to at least one Providence Road neighbor. This really, as I see it, doesn't have any effect on the mailing addresses for these people. They don't have to change their, this is sort of like, exactly like what we did here for Sheriff Holmes.
Right, right.
And so, you had the resolution before you. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for Raymond W. Burrow.
I second, ma'am.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. All right. Betty, you're on deck with pages 79 through 82 on budget supplement and transfer requests.
On page 80, there is a budget supplement request from the treasurer's office asking that a portion of the passports that have been collected be appropriated back into their budget for, to compensate those staff that have.
What page are we on?
It's on page 80 of the packet. So, you see those names there and the amounts. So you see those names there and the amounts? Do you want me to go on to the next?
Can we do these collectively? Okay? Please.
Okay, so that's typically, we, the board has appropriated 80% back to those when you keep 20. The next is a budget transfer, and this, this 2005 and 202006 sort of go together. You might recall that last month's meeting, we appropriated some money and moved some money around to cover the increases in health insurance. And so that's sort of what I need to do here, is to move these funds into that miscellaneous line of the board of supervisors from these two accounts to help cover those increases. And then you'll see the breakdown of where that money goes to each of the individual departments on 202006. We had monies, we had monies that came from an Anthem refund and some, and an additional board appropriation last month, that, that's where all these monies are coming from.
Ever question, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to make the motion that the board approve budget supplement 2020-24 and budget transfers 2020-05 and 2020-06.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Betty, you're still on deck with board and commission appointments?
I think this is the last thing for me. We have received an application from Wayne Savage, who has expressed an interest in being appointed to the Building Code Appeals Board.
Betty, how many, how many more openings do we have on that board?
One.
We still have one?
Yes.
Is there any issue with having multiple from the same district? Because I think I might have another one after Wayne.
It's, it's not, yeah, it's not so much tied-
I think it's about profession.
Yeah, it's not tied to districts.
It's about profession, I don't think it's any district, so that would have to be the board's discretion in that regard.
I don't have him yet, but he's in the works, I got to keep-
And we can see what slots are missing. You know, I think we have to have an engineer, which Wayne Savage is an engineer.
He's the engineer. I think I, the other one's a contractor that I'm working on.
Okay.
All right.
That's all we have.
Do we have action on that?
I would move that we approve Wayne Savage to serve on the Building Code Appeals Board.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Item number six, trepidation at this late hour. We get into county administrator updates.
I, I have nothing to add, you have a copy of my report, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Nothing to add?
We are, we are working with HRSD to try to get some finality on some of this. It's, it's our desire, I couldn't help it. I, I know what he's saying, I couldn't help it.
We need Google Earth or something to embellish this.
Oh, no.
Well, I mean, I could show you.
This is my last meeting, I can make all the other ones home.
It is my sincere hope that we have a work session with HRSD in January. I know this is dragging on, it's been months and months, but there's just a couple of critical issues that Heather and I have been working with them on, that they're not hearing us quite yet. I'm being very delicate how I put that, because I think, let me rephrase it, I think they're hearing us, I think they want more of a generalized agreement that they can use with multiple rural communities. What we're trying to impart to them is, we have three agreements prior that already trumped that. We've got a pretty good deal now, and we don't want to give that up in the spirit of them being able to use a more generalized agreement. So that's specifically what we're hung up on, that and a couple other things, but we hope to have that finished and moving forward in January. And everything else is in my report, if you have questions, I'm here to answer.
Madam County Attorney, if you'll not see.
Yeah, I think I've said plenty, and you guys got all my memos, and any questions, I've heard from you, and I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And a wonderful, merry Christmas and a happy new year.
All right, under any, does anybody else have any unfinished business?
I just had the draft letter regarding the Omega Protein and Men Hating Fishery.
I didn't know whether to put that new or old.
All I'm going to say is, I think we address it next month, the county attorneys looked at it, doesn't see anything necessarily wrong with it, if I'm mischaracterizing you, please tell me, but she does feel that there are some whereas's in particular that make claims that should have sources behind them.
Agreed.
So that we're not just saying whatever. So, we're not in a huge rush to do this, because the governor has taken some action here, and it's over to the Secretary of Commerce, but I am still working on it, and I think I'll have a partner officially on that come January, so for now, no action.
Okay, which brings us to item number nine, and I'm going to step out of normal order and go first, and I'm going to set the example for brevity. Veterans Day luncheon in program at Christ Church Parish, Middlesex County Veterans Day Program, I was invited back to emcee that at the courtyard, which was a very nice meeting, and we had an airport committee meeting this month, I'm done.
Well, I would take a minute, Mr. Chairman, I would, I don't have a report for committees, that some of the committees I intend to have another meeting coming up this month, but I would like to take an opportunity in particular to thank the county staff, Matt, Heather, Betty, Susan, Michelle, Dave, Mark, and Kevin, Kevin Gentry. You've earned my respect for your professionalism and dedication to our county, and I'm really grateful for the help you gave me in doing this job. I'd also like to thank board members. We don't always agree, but we always talk, and we've always tried to work together and trying to do the best for this county, and you have my respect, and I appreciate that. I've also, I've learned a great deal, and I have gotten to know some really wonderful people, and I'm thankful that I had that opportunity in representing Harmony Village. So, thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. I just have two things. One, I want to state publicly my regret that I didn't, in all that we were doing at St. Clair Walker today, find an opportunity to comment on the amount of folks who spoke about mental health in one way or another. And I mean for, for 2020, for my primary focus to be to address mental health and what we can do to secure more funding from the state, both for our Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center, where 78% of our inmates have known documented mental health issues, and currently the funding for that is about $500 a month total for one hour of a therapist for all of them. It's disgusting, the state knows about it, it's the same across all 24 regional security centers, and be on the lookout, because Superintendent Tim Dos has invited my Rotary Club, and we're going to extend an invitation to other philanthropy groups and any citizen that wants to come to have breakfast in the facility and speak with Tim in his, in his backyard, in his kitchen, about how this impacts him. He has done a yeoman's job of keeping that budget as low as possible, and the state has done very little to address the mental health issues. And mind you, these are, these are inmates that are not lifers, they're, they're being released back into the community, and so I wish I had, had said to the folks that were saying guns don't kill, people do. Well, it's generally, in my opinion, people with mental health issues, and if we're not going to get any subsidy from the state to address mental health, I'm certainly going to be talking to my senator and delegate and anybody who'll listen until we see something better come to Middlesex, and I'm even considering a pilot program that I've, I've talked with some of those folks about. And finally, I want to thank Kathy and Chip. I've only been a little less than two years in this position, and I'm still learning every day. This, this is a job where we have to disagree, and how we disagree and how we work together, you've probably noticed a difference in my attire today, I've been trying to listen to board members, constituents, and try to improve everywhere that I can, sometimes I'm late to responding, but both of you have, have had a very generous relationship with me, and you've been very patient with, you know, maybe somebody who's a slightly different generation and maybe moves too fast and has a different decorum, and I'll continue to learn from you well after the end of the year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jesse?
I did attend the Veterans Day luncheon that they had at Christ Church Parish, and also did, attended VACO, that was very well attended. I did go to a class for conflict of interest for local officials, and it's good for two years, because Luke was also there, we were then at, and all these members here are going to have to, you know, take that class, I mean, the ones that, well, Pete and John will still have to take that class, it's our class that you take online, and it's just a conflict of interest that you have to take, it's good for two years. So I did, I did attend that, and also it was, some other, what was it, it was the, it was, it was a-
Middle Peninsula Planning?
Yeah, no, I did, I did attend that, but it was an impact on utility scales on counties and different things like that, I did attend that, but it was a thing that came up, it was interesting, when you put in these solar farm, huge scale solar farm, is there enough room for, say, for example, you go through a dry spell, get a fire, is there enough room for those fire trucks? They're looking at that, you know, because, you know, they could start at one end and carry right on, and you can't get your fire trucks in to put them out, you've got some issues, and then to keep going and going on to the fourth street. So, you know, I know they got a lot of them set up, but those, those hard, large utilities, solar farms, they got to look at, you know, having it accessible for fires, because you think about it, it get caught, it get burning, you're not going to stop it, and if you can't get those trucks in there to put it out. So that was very interesting on that. And basically, that was it, but I also like to say, you know, we're not, we didn't meet out of hour on all things, but, you know, it was good working with Kathy and Chip, you know? And also, I wanted to say, Chip, appreciate how you had some foresight on this meeting that was coming on. John, John predicted that it was going to be, you know, we're going to have to move it, and you made, you made preparations on that, but in case it didn't, because we didn't really have any idea how many people were going to go, but Facebook said, yeah, it was going to be packed. And then, like I said, I had talked to some other board members in King Williams County, which, you know, they have a little more population, but they had 300 at that meeting. But you made preparations, and it worked out fine, you know, nothing's perfect, because, you know, when you advertise, you got to set up where you advertise, you can't sell my advertising and move, you got to find out what's going to happen, then you move, and you prepared that perfectly, and I want to commend you on that, because we had that happen before, and some of these board members wasn't here, they weren't even on the board. And, and I anticipated to move it, they didn't want to move it, we had people up and down the halls, we had hundreds of people outside, and it was, it was chaos. So, you know, experiencing this again and having a plan is always smart, a way to decide things, because sometimes you don't know how many people want to come.
Well, thank you, Wayne.
All right.
Mr. Mansfield?
I think I'll, I'll pass, but I do, could I ask the man a question?
Sure. He got the floor.
Thank you. How does this HRSD thing, does it slow up the dismantling of the Urbana Waste Treatment Plan, or does it make it faster?
I'm glad you asked, because I could go to Google Earth right now. Absolutely not, that's the good news. I attended a pre-bid meeting for the engineering on the Interceptor Main, they are still on track, and actually, I'm not going to use the word expedite, but they're still on track with Interceptor Main, and that's great news for our county. They're, they're doing the Interceptor Main project, they, they still have the target completion date in August 2024. So, that's on track.
August of what?
August of 2024. Maybe soon.
That's around your 68th birthday, Pete.
Any other business to come before this meeting of the board of supervisors? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a comment from our county attorney.
You still had a public comment that you never addressed in your previous agenda. I recognize it clearly.
I'm sorry, we got tremendously out of order.
Well, actually, we did. At the very end.
Open to public hearing, any comments? Hearing seeing none, we'll close public hearing, thank you for keeping me in line.
One last time.
The next item of business is a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Seconded. All in favor, vote with your feet.